Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Today is Wednesday, September 17th at 6:30 PM. I just wanted, I can do a courtesy notice which is on here that we do have in attendance, some of our Park and Recreation Commissioners who are here for a very important part of our conversation tonight, which is about Piper Park. So, thank you for being here. It's an extra meeting for you, but I appreciate you being here. Shall we begin with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Margalies.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andre.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. If you can, could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of our audience who are online and members who are here in our chambers to address the Council for matters that are not on tonight's agenda. We ask that you come forward to the podium, introduce yourself, and keep it under three minutes if you can. And remember, since it's not agendized, we won't be able to have a long conversation about anything. Thank you. I don't think the mic is on. Just a second, please. We want to make sure we capture everybody's voice on the video recording.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Anita Bach and I reside at 200 Marina Vista Avenue, Larkspur. I'm here tonight to request that the city promptly adopt a half-flag policy that requires review by the Council when circumstances so warrant. In light of the fact that the city of Larkspur flew its flag at half-staff on Friday, September 12th, Saturday, the 13th, and Sunday, the 14th, as far as I could determine, the city has no flag policy and flag decisions are left solely to staff. When I inquired of City Manager Schwartz and Councilman Paulson on Saturday why the flag was at half-staff, City Manager Schwartz advised me that the President had ordered the flag lowered. I advised Mr. Schwartz and the Council on Saturday that the city was not legally obligated to lower the flag and that, given the current politically charged climate, it was inappropriate, inadvisable, and provocative to do so, despite which the flag remained at half-staff throughout the weekend. In our current political climate, there is, there are regrettably serious political considerations to flying a flag at half-staff, which underscores the reason why the city's flag policy must require Council review in controversial or highly charged political circumstances. When a flag flown at half-staff equates to inappropriate political commentary and the endorsement of controversial persons, it invites community discord and it disrespects and demeans members of our community. It is undisputed that, under the U.S. Flag Code, which is Title IV of the U.S. Code, a local city can refuse a presidential half-staff proclamation. The U.S. Flag Code serves only as a voluntary guide for non-federal entities and it is not a mandatory federal regulation. It is not legally enforceable and it contains no civil or criminal penalties for non-compliance. A presidential proclamation applies to flags on federal buildings and installations and not on local municipal sites. The status was, this status was reinforced by the Supreme Court. While it is customary for local governments to follow federal flag actions, they are not legally obligated to do so and the city can therefore clearly decide whether to lower its municipal flag. While the U.S. Flag Code specifies certain federal officials for whom the flag should be lowered, it does grant the President the authority to modify or to alter any flag rule by proclamation when he deems it's appropriate. This broad authority allows the President to issue half-staff orders for non-government figures or other reasons. It is therefore vitally important that the city promptly adopt a flag policy so as to avoid taking flag actions in the future that are disrespectful to many and inconsistent with the city's stated values. In these politically charged times, caution, discretion, discernment, and respect is crucial. And I call on the Council to take immediate action to prevent a recurrence of this unfortunate action. Blind adherence to presidential dictates irrespective of party affiliation undermines our democracy.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you.
If you were, be interested, could you submit that as public comments so that it, so that I can read that in greater detail later? It's your choice. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comment?
Before we move on, could I just ask staff? I tend to agree with that last speaker. I don't know if this needs to be agendized at a future meeting.
Let's hear them submit a public comment and then we can...
Okay, but I'm just, I think that it was a valid perspective that we should probably have some type of policy to determine those, those things and whether it's appropriate to talk about it now and here if we have a policy or if you want to agendize it, I'd leave that up to staff.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Steve Kaplan. I live at 200 Marina Vista, Larkspur. First, let me say I abhor all gun violence, whether it results in the murder of innocent children going to school, worshippers at their synagogues or temples or churches, people in their theaters enjoying a movie, or a political assassination of a Minnesota legislature and her husband in her own home, or a right-wing political operative making a public speech. It all is unnecessary and is a black eye to our country. Having said that, over the last nine or 10 years, the American flag has been co-opted by far-right extremists to represent their version of democracy and patriotism. Those that don't adhere to those values are seen as the enemy. The American flag was never intended to divide this country. The American flag was intended to honor our country and all of its people. With the city lowering their flag at half-staff for those days that Anita had mentioned, recognizes those who espouse a far-right extremist agenda, whether intended by the city or not. Symbolism has become incredibly important in these days. And everyone, including and probably most importantly, our political elected officials, must understand how this symbolism is dividing our country and ask yourselves the question, are we supporting that division in our actions? Or are we trying to unite our country and our citizens by the actions we take? It's imperative, from my perspective, that the city have a flag policy that you, as the elected officials, debate whether it's appropriate to display or not when a presidential proclamation is ordered for federal institutions to fly their flag at half-staff. If the Council debates that and you so choose to lower your flag for somebody that I might disagree with, at least I'm comforted knowing that there was a political, open conversation before action was taken.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Do you have public comment? Just introduce yourself to us, please. Hi, Shelly. And lower the mic because you're, he was a slight bit taller and we want to hear you.
I'm Neighbors.
Oh, okay.
And Steve. And, you know, I think Anita represented a fine legal stand and Steve talked historically. And I just wanted you to know that, I just want to say, I am a devout Christian, Christ follower, and my friends, both Muslims, Buddhists, and Christ followers are pretty much all appalled with the hyperbolic hate speech of Charlie Kirk. And we wanted you to know, I wanted you to know, that we are not offended if you choose not to lower the flag for someone of his ilk. We, in fact, support you and your leadership and would love to see that the flag not be lowered for people who just are so divisive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the chamber on this subject or any other subject? And I don't see any hands raised online, but I'll get to you, David. I don't see hands raised online on this particular subject, okay? David, come on up.
Thank you. I'm David Mahler and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the 36 members of the Larkspur Climate Group. And we'd like to ask that an agenda item be added to the next council meeting to consider adoption of a resolution supporting timely implementation of the Bay Area Air District's Zero NOx Rules, which would apply for newly installed water heaters. This rule was adopted by the air district back in 2023. The implementation date is January 27th. It's still a ways down the road. The purpose of this rule is to reduce nitrogen oxide emissions, NOx is the abbreviations for that. And those emissions, among other things, are produced by the burning of natural gas. And why do this? It's because NOx is the primary component of smog. It is the primary component of our air pollution. And that pollution, of course, causes all kinds of other problems. So, this rule is a big deal. And just to put it in perspective, there is more NOx produced by burning natural gas in buildings, mostly for space and water heating, than is produced by all the passenger vehicles in the Bay Area. Those numbers come from the air district itself. They're not my numbers, they're their numbers. So, this is a big deal that needs to be addressed. The rule has common sense exceptions for difficult installations, financial hardship, and the air district is about to consider a bunch of more exceptions to make sure that it's not too much of a hardship. Since water heaters last 20 years, that means 5% are replaced on average every year, it's going to take 20 years to replace all the water heaters. But we need to get started on this transition. And frankly, the start date isn't going to look any different a year from now, two years from now, five years from now. We got to get going on this. So, many jurisdictions are considering adopting resolutions in support that would go to the air districts, and I'm urging that Larkspur join them. And I'd really like to see this put on the agenda for the next meeting to consider it. I actually have a draft resolution that many jurisdictions are considering right now. I'll submit it to staff to take a look at and support. It should take very little of staff's time. It's totally consistent with Larkspur's Climate Action Plan. So, again, I request this be added to the next meeting. There's going to be a key air district board meeting coming up this fall, and the more resolutions that go in in advance of that, the more impact they'll have.
Thank you, David. Are you staying for the Climate Action Forum update, which is, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who would like to make a public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. I think some of, I will admit to being unaware of some of the rules of, of flag flying. And I think we would probably benefit from getting sort of a primer on that in the future. We had a conversation a number of years ago about secondary flags, meaning not United States or California flag, but other flags. And that was a robust conversation about how we decide which flags to fly, not on the pole, but secondarily. So, if we can figure out a time to agendize that, it might help us to understand. The timing of this unfortunate assassination was, did not allow any opportunity for us to gather, to meet, so, or to provide public notice, which I think we need to factor into that conversation, too. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to presentations and proclamations. We have a presentation tonight, 3.1 for Climate Action Forum Update.
Good evening, Mayor Way, members of the council and the community. My name is Shannon O'Hara. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the city of Larkspur. And tonight, we are providing a very brief presentation on our Climate Action Forum update. Folks hear me? Okay. When we established the forum, we committed to on-the-off months where the Climate Action Forum does not meet, that we provide an update to the council on activities and what we're doing. So, consistent with that commitment, we're providing an update this evening, and I will mainly hand it over to Councilmember Margalies, who is our climate liaison on the council, Climate Action Forum Liaison on the council, to just provide a brief update to the community about what's coming up at the next meeting and what we've been working on since our, since our last meeting and since there have been last action items on the council related to our Climate Action Plan and other climate efforts in the city.
Thanks, Shannon. Hello, everybody. And just a real quick update, there was a meeting held in August. And at that meeting, we spent quite a bit of time talking about getting a policy passed to adopt the Cal, the Tier One Calgary codes. And you may have heard or not that at our second meeting in August, the council did adopt the policies or adopted the Tier One Calgary code. So, that is underway and we expect to have maybe another update by October 8th. And October 8th is the meeting, the next Climate Action Forum meeting. So, we meet every other month, the second Wednesday of the month. So, we'll be meeting in October and then following that in December. The agenda for the meeting will be published by the end of this week. We will plan to discuss electrification of the city's fleets, as well as electrification of landscaping and maintenance tools. There is interest among the climate group to level up Larkspur's policies for using electric-powered maintenance tools so that we are in accordance with our neighboring jurisdictions, so a tightening, if you will, of our ordinance. And we will also be revisiting prioritization of the 2030 Climate Action Plan items. There are several action items in our 2030 Climate Action Plan. And the council, I'm sorry, the forum has taken a lot of time to distill down the 70 most important that we feel would benefit our, our goal to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And from that, a, a survey or a solicitation went out to the forum members to ask them to come back with their top five priorities. So, we've received about five submissions back. And among those submissions, we're looking for the crossover or the intersection of climate members of the, to prioritize. So, at the next meeting, what we'll be doing is looking at all of those items that were submitted, and specifically, staff will be bringing them to us in a quadrant that specifies the level of effort and the value that we would get from adopting those different actions. So, if you're interested, I would encourage you, please show up at our next meeting on the 8th and come out and let us know what you feel needs to be a priority on the city's behalf. After that meeting, I will be coming back to council and making a recommendation. And I think that's it for my updates.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there any questions of that from the council members? Go ahead.
I have more of a comment, another question. And I know I probably have a minority view, but I think it's important that it's at least considered when, when moving forward, that when we pass regulations, you know, whether it's for things to be used in housing, gardening, whatever it happens to be, the reason we have to pass those regulations is because it's economically inefficient, in the sense that if it were cheaper for a gardener to use electric equipment, they would. The reason that they don't is because it's more expensive. And that, that goes with, or less efficient. And that goes with heating, if you're talking about gas heating in, in homes, or whatever we're talking about. So, when we pass these regulations, while I agree the goal is worthy, reducing greenhouse gases, and everybody, I think, most people acknowledge that that's, that's a good direction to go, I just want to make sure that we are weighing the price that we're paying, whether that price is being paid by the individual who is, has to change their equipment, or housing prices go up, or there's, there's going to be some price that has to be paid for each of those. And I just want to make sure that we consider and we weigh that when deciding the benefit that we're getting by doing these things versus the cost that we have to pay. That's all.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
And to the public comment that was given, is that a topic you think you're, that David Mahler brought up, is that a topic you think you could explore, too, with your Climate Action Committee?
Absolutely, we can explore it. I think David is urging us to look at it more soon than our meeting.
And Councilmember Margalies, so the survey that got sent out, did it just get sent out to the Climate Action Forum people, or do you want residents more broadly who are, might be interested to respond?
We felt that it was more prudent to send it out and more manageable to send it out to folks who have been attending the Climate Action Forum or have made public comment in the past on climate. We don't have a way to get it out to all of the residents. We don't have a database with emails for all of the residents. And we also felt that that probably wouldn't have been a prudent use of the survey. We are really focused on the folks who are coming actively and engaging with us and showing an interest in helping us prioritize the Climate Action Plan.
Great.
For the benefit of the public, I'm going to add a couple of things on the comment here. So, again, for the, for members of the public, one of the reasons the Climate Action Forum was established, so that members of the community and folks could talk and wouldn't be constrained by public comment, and have two or three minutes to talk about how they feel about landscaping equipment, et cetera. I encourage everyone to come on down and have the discussion. No decision would be made that would change an ordinance at the Climate Action Forum. That's a function of the city council, would come before the city council. There would be further discussions or workshops for some of the things that Councilmember Candell is interested in addressing, et cetera. There would be other times for the community to engage and talk. But I don't want folks to think that this is happening at the forum, et cetera. It's for knowledge sharing, it's for status updates, it's for people to ask questions of staff in a little bit more of a free-form and elongated format. So, just, yeah, if you're, if you're new to it, that's, that's how we set it up by design. And then, to the point about the, the tracker and the prioritization, et cetera, we're in year one, so we're in a grand experiment in how we're going to work through this. So, at, right now, we're, again, focusing on really engage individuals and for staff to be able to provide information to folks and the information sharing. It doesn't exclude that there might be other calls to the broader community around Larkspur's climate action and what we're doing and what we're working on.
Nothing else from us? Is there any members of the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment on this Climate Action Committee update? Yes, Mr. Mahler.
Thank you. David Mahler, I live here in Larkspur. I thank you for the excellent report on the Climate Action Forum. So, I just want to, again, reiterate how valuable the forum seems to be. And especially in advance of the meeting where the Calgary Tier One was considered. The Climate Action Forum, I think, had done a lot of work and it was a great opportunity for staff to vet with the community of what that was being considered and to, so we came into the meeting with, I think, a good understanding. To the point about breadth of participation, each of the meetings has had 12 or 15 members of the community. And what I have found refreshing is each meeting has had some new faces show up, people that came just because they were interested in climate with, with a full array of perspectives on this. So, I think in terms of both an opportunity to have this broader communication with the community and also to bring more of the community into the climate conversation, it's really being effective, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Shannon? Okay, then we'll close that item. Thank you, Sarah. That brings us to item four, approval of the consent calendar. There are five items on the consent calendar. Do any council members want to pull an item?
I just have a brief comment on 4.5.
Okay. Anybody want to pull another item? No? Any member of the public want to discuss anything on the consent calendar? No? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted, it may just be a typo, but on 4.5, I believe, in Exhibit 1, it talks about Recommendation 4, and it says, "We are going to implement it." And then, when you go to the explanations a page or two later, it says it has already been implemented. And I just thought they should probably be consistent if this is something that we're going to be sending in or going to be held to. That's my only comment.
Does that show up in your, you can see that? Okay.
Thank you for catching that. I know exactly why that slipped in there. We'll fix that before it goes out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Wow, that was pretty thorough. I was, I'm impressed with that one. Chat GPT'd it, huh? Good lawyering.
The correct is that it has been implemented. The second statement is the correct one.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted it to be clear on the first page.
Okay, so I'll have a motion to approve with the changes to 4.5 as outlined by Councilmember Candell and affirmed by City Manager Schwartz. Anyone want to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? No. Okay, that brings us to five, city managers' report.
Well, we've been busy, but I think some of you are going to report on some of the activities that staff's been supplementing, such as Monday's event here regarding the city hall renovation. So, I will generally leave that to staff. I do want to acknowledge that since you last met, the wine stroll took place for, that the chamber sponsors. I understand generally it was a good success. We've always learned from these things and we had a couple of hiccups that we're going to sit down with the chamber and make sure in the future don't happen again. But overall, my understanding is that people were pleased with the event and that's what we want to see happen. I had a couple of folks ask about the barge they're seeing out in the quarter of Madera Creek, so I just wanted to bring that up. And then, I will admit, if you ask me questions that are too technical, I'll make Mr. Skinner come up, our Public Works Director, and explain them to you. So, we have a neighborhood, the Larkspur Marina neighborhood, right across the street from Redwood High School. And folks who are familiar with that neighborhood know that what are called the outer rim houses all have docks out onto the creek or its tributaries. All of those homes voted several years ago to pay a property assessment that goes into a pot, and they build up the pot over several years. And then, they do dredges to make sure that the siltation of the creek doesn't prevent them from being able to enjoy their docks with the boats that they own. So, the barge is paid for from that money, the assessment from those homes. The city's participation is we manage the money, we take in the tax money, we hold it. We provide staffing in terms of providing budget and audit, audit services to this entity. And then, staff engages with a representation from the neighborhood of homeowners that are affected to plan out these periodic dredges that occur. So, folks who've been paying attention for a while know about every five years, this type of dredging occurs. So, that's what you're seeing out there. The barge sits in the creek, the dredging takes place, and then, once it's got a certain amount of mass in it, they take it, the spoils, I think that's the correct term. I think they take it to somewhere near Alameda. Mr. Skinner probably knows more accurately than me, but he's nodding his head, so I must be right about that. And then, they come back. And so, they'll do that for a while till they've cleared out the amount that they've been permitted to dredge out of the creek. And this is a valuable resource for that neighborhood. It maintains the amenity, that that neighborhood was sort of built to present as one of the amenities for living there, and so that has value to the community as well. So, that's what you're seeing. And if anybody has any questions, we're happy to take a crack at answering them.
Yeah, I have a, just a couple of thanks, Dan, for that report. So, the first question I have, and for the benefit of the public, can you let us know how long we expect the dredging to go on and whether or not there is some kind of deadline that it has to be completed by a certain time?
I know the second answer sometime in November, but I think Julian needs to come up and say how long, because I don't remember. I know it's several weeks, but I, they're under an environmental restriction and that deadline kicks in in November, I believe.
Yeah, so they have a number of regulatory permits covering the work that dictate the times of year that they can work. And they also have restrictions of having to float this barge under the bridge of the 101 freeway, which they can only do at certain tide levels. So, taking all that into account, they have 25,000 yards to move out, and each barge holds 350 yards. They can only make one trip a day based on the tide levels, so they projected 81 days of work. Of course, the permits, they need to be finished by November 30th. So, the math just about works out. They're hoping to finish by November 30th, otherwise they have to ask for an extension from all the regulatory agencies, or they have to come back in July of next year, which is when the permit window opens up again.
Okay. And is, is the barge always at that location or does...
Or does it get moved down the creek and like more further into the neighborhood, I guess? I don't know what to call it, but.
So they're doing what's called a minor dredge, but it does involve the parts of the main channel. And then also the two channels that come in towards Dory. So one is the Larkspur Channel and the other is the Lucky Channel. So the barge will make its way around over those 81 days, the whole way around the perimeter of what's Riviera Circle. And depending on where the tide levels are, the barge will be anchored wherever it needs to be, depending on whether it can get under the bridge that you think. So over the course of 80 days, you'll see it go from one side of that neighborhood. And it'll be on the main channel for a period and then it'll also be on the other side by Lucky Drive for a period too.
Okay, so it, does it actually come down towards Piper Park? Okay, okay.
Yeah, Julian, while you're there, quick, I'm just trying to understand it from the flood zone perspective. So I think the net effect is to deepen the channel about eight feet or six feet or something like that.
It depends on, so they basically, they do a survey, a hydrographic survey. They go out there and they measure where the silt level has accumulated to. The purpose of this dredge is not for flood control, it's for to be able to get the vessels in and out of the docks. So they have an elevation this designed so the boats can get in and out, personal boats can get in and out of those docks. And it's basically just material that's accumulated since the last dredge they did, which is about nine years ago now. And so for the most part, it's just a channel that's right next to the docks. And then I believe there's 20 to 25 docks where they need to go into the docks a little bit. But it's all determined by a survey and they see how much sediment has accumulated since the last dredge was completed. So they won't be out in the middle of the channel. It's right next to the docks to make sure the boat can get from the dock to the channel.
And there's nothing planned for reducing or, you know, taking the silt out from the middle for, you know, for flooding or for conveyance of the water?
It's not covered in the permit. It's not the purpose of the.
But I mean, in general, is that anywhere in the plan?
Yeah, I want to be careful because I don't want to go string in another topic. This is not a flood control measure. It has almost nothing to do with Quarter Madera Creek proper, which is a whole nother discussion. So it is specifically to facilitate the ability of those homeowners to take their boats out to the bay.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
I just have one last question. With regards to the work to getting all of the permits from the regulatory agencies, is that something that whoever they hire to do the dredging, they go and take the time and use the resources? Or does our Public Works Department have to get involved and spend time doing that?
So the tax, the property assessment I mentioned.
Yeah.
The city years ago fostered the creation of a legal entity to be technically the entity that receives that money. We operate that entity, very similar to the discussions we had about the lagoon neighborhood and their issue. That entity contracts with experts to manage the whole project. Public Works' role is kind of to make sure nobody does anything incorrectly. But there is an engineering firm involved that led the process to get the permits.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of his report? Okay, that brings us to item six, Council Members' Reports. I guess I'll start on this end since Sarah's had a big report already and we'll end there.
I have nothing to do.
Okay. Oh, okay. Then we go to Gabe?
Sure. Yeah, so just to a brief announcement, I was at the SMART meeting today. And two pretty big decisions. One was eminent domain and the other was, you know, starting a big capital project. So the, you know, the board decided today to authorize the, you know, the beginning of the construction to Healdsburg, which is a $23 million vote. And, you know, one interesting detail, you know, this, some of it parallels our own libraries. We did a design build and they had a progressive design build, which is another, you know, some, you know, form of contracting and project management authorized by the state. But, but it's a big deal, you know, for, for, you know, that, that agency and the train. And then they're also trying to do the bike path and there are four segments that still need to be done, you know, between some others. And, and there are about 47 people who are making claims that the train and the approximately, you know, the rail corridor is about 80 feet wide and we need about 12 feet of path. But people are claiming that they, you know, that they own that. And, and so it's an easement. It's, you know, again, we had a parallel situation here for our own library. So, so we voted to file, you know, to authorize eminent domain proceedings. And, and so again, that's, all of these things are about the growth and expansion and ridership continues to grow. I think they're both the paths and the weekly ridership is like 4,700 now. And then new stations will add more. So, and that's it. Yeah.
Sarah, anything additional?
I have nothing to report, but I do have a question about SMART. I have spoken to some people who say that during commute hours, it's standing room only. And I'm wondering, what is the capacity for them to add another car?
Yeah. Now, that's a great question and I think there's a tipping point that they haven't quite yet reached. So, you know, people will, you know, informally say, I see the SMART train and it's empty. And then, you know, there are times. So the question is when to add a third car? And, and that's, that's something that comes up, you know, on the board, at the board meetings, you know, from time to time. So I can ask, you know, the General Manager, Eddie Cummins, you know, how that's changing? Because we saw a month over month and year over year growth through, you know, we reached 1.2, 1.1 or 1.2 million riders in the last fiscal year. So this may be the time to do it, especially with the additional station that they added Windsor. So I'll check in for you.
Okay. And then the only other question is that I have heard from some folks here in the Green Bray neighborhood. They're wondering about the ability to leverage the shuttle to take people the last mile into Bon Air and North Magnolia. Are those some conversations that we could spot?
Yeah, I usually ask that. So they reported out on the Connect Shuttle, which is also growing. And I've asked, you know, frequently about servicing Green Bray. And I think the Bon Air shop, they're in conversation, you know, with, with some of the, you know, different, you know, commercial interests there as well. So I'll raise that point. It's good to hear that you're hearing it too, because I usually come in just as a Larkspur voice. But yeah, that's, that's a question I'll raise again.
Thank you.
Any? From India? Okay. Okay, I'll wrap it up. It's been kind of a busy couple of weeks for me. First of all, we had a library, joint library meeting. Stephanie, Vice Mayor Andre was there with me. The three library organizations that help support the library and the new library, the Commons, the Friends of the Library and the Larkspur Library Endowment Fund, yes, met. It was called by the Library Board, so it was their meeting. And it was essentially just getting to know what everyone's fundraising opportunities are of those three entities, what their goals and plans are for continuing to support the library for the new moving from Magnolia to Rose. And I thought it was productive. I didn't know some of the other people who are in part of these other organizations. So it was a good meet and greet. Anything else you thought about that particular meeting? No? Okay. I have done two ribbon cuttings, says Mayor. One is at the new Bon Air Veterinary Hospital, which is lovely, by the way. It's very nice. It's on the west end of the Bon Air Shopping Center, near the Wells Fargo. It's also, it's a brand new veterinary hospital and a dental clinic for dogs and cats. So we did that. And then I did a ribbon cutting at a brand new adaptive learning center, which is a tutoring center for, for youth up through high school. And it is in the near, the building right past the bridge where the new wheel is. I can't remember the name of that complex. And that was lovely. It's a local woman who started it and has four educators who are doing tutoring for kids with learning differences. Then Councilmember Margulies and I attended Supervisor Colbert's party that he had to thank commissioners who volunteer within D2, District Two. And that was up at the County, Marin County Cafeteria. And that was kind of lovely. I got, we got to meet a few people who volunteer for, within Larkspur and Green Bray for countywide committees, which I really appreciate it when people do that. On Friday, Nick Stone, our Park and Rec Director, and a couple of different Park and Rec Commissioners and some members of the public were treated to see some new wheelchair, adaptive wheelchairs by a company called Wheelies. And they brought an adapt, two adaptive wheelchairs and an adapted walker that we were testing out for, to see if they would be appropriate to add to Piper Park for our mobility-challenged residents. So thank you, Nick Stone, for putting that together and for those who participated and got in and wheeled all around Piper Park with this motorized off-road vehicle. So we're going to see a little bit more about that later. I also am the representative to the DC3, which is the county's disaster citizen corps council. And we met last Thursday and I put the report out for the regular meeting of the MCCMC, which are the Marin Mayors and Council Members. But I am stepping down from that role. So you want to step up for it? Or anybody here, it will be offered in the September meeting for, to apply for and represent all of the Marin Mayors and Council Members. So I'm encouraging anybody who's interested in doing that. I'd be happy to coach you on it. And then I think lastly, Councilmember Paulson and I are speaking tomorrow night at the Presbyterian, Redwood Presbyterian Church. They wanted a meet the mayor night and I was introduced to the pastor there by Councilmember Paulson. So invited him to come along as a pastor mayor. So that kind of sums it up. That brings us. Oh, yeah. Why don't you bring that up? I missed a very important meeting that we had on Monday.
Yeah, so on Monday evening, the City Hall Ad Hoc Committee, which is Mayor Way, myself and the Chair of the Heritage Preservation Board, Hillary Colhane, although she was absent, but she was involved in the planning. Along with staff, we had a, our first town hall meeting about City Hall, about this building. And I would say we probably had about 20 to 25 people, members of the public come. It was great. People got a tour of the building. So the members of the public got to see staff offices and other parts of this building that they may not normally have access to. And the architects from Page and Turnbull were here. And then we, so after the tour, Mayor Way and I moderated basically a town hall where we got feedback from the public, members of the public with respect to the historic structures report and the options that were put forth in there. And so I think we got some really great feedback that, you know, Mayor Way and I and staff will compile and bring back to council so that we can, at some point. We do have another session that's coming up. I believe it's October 7th. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Tuesday, October 7th, I believe. Again, another session where members of the public are welcome to come. It will be a charrette-style meeting where people can learn more about what's in the historic structures report and also just provide feedback in terms of what they would like to see happen here in this building.
Great. Thank you for that. And for those who are interested, there'll be many more meetings and conversations about this. But the very important data set that we did, which is the historic structure report and also an engineering study are online for you to read. They're very big and lengthy and full of a lot of details, but it'll give you a lot of information that we've already acquired about this, this structure, its history and its challenges. Okay, thank you for that. So that brings us to item seven, public hearing, which we have none. So we're up to our main business item, which is item eight, consider options for Recreation Department relocation.
So I'm going to just make a few opening comments and then turn tonight's presentation over to Recreation Director Nick Stone and Public Works Director Julian Skinner. We're here tonight to have this item because we've known for a long time that a day would come when the Larkspur Quarter Madera School District would need more space. And for those who don't know, Recreation has, for many decades now, occupied space within their offices. The back end of their offices have been for Larkspur Recreation. The superintendent came to us about a year ago and said, you know, the day's getting closer. I need some more space. He and I talked about it and I said, you know, rather than a formal eviction process, which is outlined in the agreement, we're friends and we have a good relationship. Let's work something out so we can take a time as a community and you as a council to look at different options. So we're not in a rush to move out of here. And they've been very accommodating to us. And I just want to really emphasize, this is not a situation where two agencies are not getting along. It's just, we know they need more space for their administration. And we've known that at some point, we would have to figure out where to house our recreation operation. We've made some adjustments already. And if you go down now, our community space is cut in half in order to accommodate the shifts that we've already made for the district. And I think probably by the end of our fiscal year and into the summer, they'll need us to make some more to keep accommodating them. But I do think they are open to working with us to make sure whatever timetable we put ourselves on with the discussion we're having tonight and any subsequent discussions, we can still make sure we're offering recreation services to the community during this whole period. So with that, we thought this evening, we'd give you a picture of, and the community a picture of what Recreation does and some of the needs and some of the reasons it's located where it's located. And then we're going to talk about the options that are discussed in this report for potential temporary or permanent housing for the Recreation Department. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick.
I'm Nick Stone, Recreation Director, and I'm going to do a two-part presentation. A little bit about Piper Park, a lot about Piper Park and the activities down there. And then I'm going to wrap it up a bit about Recreation Department, what we do. So first slide, thank you to Paulie Gleason for putting this PowerPoint together. We'll picture it when they have access to it. So we, a few years ago, I sat in on a meeting with a salesman from Office of AI. And they were trying to sell us this cell phone tracking tool where we could essentially track the movement of large routes. We were given a quote that was way out of our league and forgot about it. Over the next couple of years, some of the county picked up back that's to be the ports. And the city council have access to that. So the way Placer AI works is they own the rights to apps that are on SMART, the location services. They take that data and they extrapolate it based on number of people that are in the area. And we can get kind of broad, you can see broad activity. Sounds scary, but I want to go over the safety and privacy thing, what they use. There's a minimum number, sorry, yeah, minimum number of people that they can pull data from. So if I try to pull data from Piper Park or an area elsewhere, I need a minimum of 500 people in order to get that information. So I can't tell one person was at Piper Park, they walked the trail, the starbuck afterward. So anytime I pull a report with less than 500, I get there, which means I can't. Placer AI also claims an error, error margin of error, sorry, of less than five. Beginning of these numbers, this is pretty eye-opening.
But Nick, these systems are all over the place. I mean, you walk downtown and you walk in front of Macy's and they know you're walking in front of Macy's. So, I mean, these, this is not unique to, I just want people to know that these systems are everywhere within our.
I do think what Nick's trying to do is tell folks, the city of Larkspur is not tracking any individual person and where they're going. But we do have access to data that shows when 500 or more people are at a particular place.
But I'm just wanting people to know that, I mean, you walk, I was in Union Square the other day. If you walk past Neiman Marcus, they know. But I'm just wanting people to know that, I mean, you walk, I was in Union Square the other day. If you walk past Neiman Marcus, they know you've walked past Neiman Marcus. I mean, because these systems are, are all over, not just, I mean, they're, and you can get a targeted ad from Neiman Marcus on your phone when you walk by it. I mean, it's, these systems are everywhere. I know, we don't do any of that. Yes, we don't do any of that, but.
So what we get though, is that congratulations, Piper Park is the most visited municipal park in the county. I think it's a no small feat in this, in this area where people really enjoy being outdoors. Last year, since 2024 data, Piper Park had 105,000 visits. From 84,600.
And how many dogs? Oh yeah, yeah, yeah. I bet Alpine does.
And so I pulled some information from, from some of our neighboring parks, which are kind of comparable. So we found a lot of their numbers too. So Town Park next door, also extremely busy park with a lot of sports and activities going on. Had 201, 201,000. 101, 100,000 visitors in the, in the same time period. Memorial in San Antone is also a very popular park, always dragging out there and they had 89,000. McPiers is a large county park in Santa Fe. Best for Santa Fe and 192,000 out there. What's important to note with a lot of these, these parks is that they have some kind of feel of an attachment to that. Slime and show as well, but you know, Town Park has a community center, Memorial Park also has a community center. McPiers has had a community center, they have a pool and snack shack and then a large area with a staff. So here we are comparing a few more parks in the area. So I pulled Stafford Lake Park in Nevada, gives us a lot of weekend traffic out there, a lot of data banks. And one that I was surprised by is also Hickweed Park, very popular park, heavily utilized and I could just continue on, I think, and you guys are all regular. Recognize them when you're out there. This data that I pulled here is based on stays of 10 minutes or longer. So earlier when I was pulling these reports, we pulled everybody that visited in the time period. More than 20 days, I think. And that did actually make up 500, 5,000. Dropping off the schools, maybe some of the apartments, one from Redwood. Graph of we, by the, and they work out at, at Hall Middle School that I think Piper most days, so there's nothing, nothing shocking there for the, so what we see is it's less use in the winter. The UV jumps up in the springtime and then soon as school gets out, I think everybody leaves town, they're good town, they're over there and then slowly climbs back out of the fall. This one is also very interesting, even the days of the week. I expected Saturday, Sunday to jump off the charts, but I first just used went down there a lot. It's always, it's fun for me in the fall when, when summer's out, the first stop, I'll pick it back in school. And I go to leave at 12 o'clock here, packed out there. There are so many activities out there. For apartment rent guys, it feels really good.
Hey Nick, does this include the Hall Middle School field data? Okay.
Show you a graphic that has. All of this, this data as well.
Okay.
People visiting, you can see the jumps forward and afterward. And one thing that I want to point out, there is a lot of people going to lunch, hanging out. Something that, something that, that this is surprising. Here with this, this is the map of what people are, where they're spending their time out there. So this is the, kind of a concentration of where people are going. So with this, it includes all the facilities that we can see using that it's all there. So it seems to go around, go to spectators, watch games. As far as blocking us here, but the most used spot is golf. So it's a nice spread, a concentration there and picnic areas, heavily used, ball and ball. Playground stuff there. You can see the paint outline to, to block out, go out to dog, armor dog. So, cool, cool graphic. Piper is used by a lot of people coming from a lot of areas. So using this data, we're able to show where people are coming from. There's not a whole lot of people coming from outside of Marin. You can see concentrations of people. So just across the village. And so people as far away as Sebastopol to Stockton to Redwood City. And obviously the heavy concentrations.
Do we still have the sand volleyball leased by USF? We did years ago. Anymore? Okay. I was thinking San Francisco, they were there all the time with the. Yeah. Okay.
So we saw the map of people from all over the area using, using Piper Park, but, but what I really want to drive home is that Luxferings are moving the Piper Park and that, but this is a heavily used local park. Look at the other neighbors and stuff that use the park. This ends the Placer AI portion of that. The recreation stuff. Any questions?
I just have one quick question. Thanks, Nick, for your presentation. I'm curious, the data set that you pulled, you said it had to have a minimum of 500 people. Did you pull it for specific days or did you pull it for a period of time? How did that work?
This is pulled over the course of all of 2004. The year. If I were to all say, you know, 1:00 to 2:00 a day, I don't think that I would have 500 people. So that, that, that report wouldn't.
Okay.
Pull it for, for some events, for example, some of these park series.
Yeah.
Being able to pull an actual date between 6:00 and 8:00 because I hadn't hit the 500 margin yet. So what I can do is I can pull, you know, the five consecutive Fridays between 6:00 and 8:00 that get a total.
I see.
That time and then kind of have it out, but yeah.
Okay. So, but, so this data set that you're presenting to us is for the year 2025 from. Okay. Thank you.
About what we do and, and why it's, why it's convenient for us to be located down at Piper Park. So we had a great turnout from council. I want to thank you guys for coming out and using the park. This year, this is something that I had been trying to grow in 2018, 2019, and then obviously hit a wall. And this year just really felt like it was coming back. We had a lot of big fans and a lot of great energy. This is can be a challenging event to run. It's, it's scary out there. Sometimes the electrical, we both the wind. I think the first show of, second show of the year, we had the power cut tripping before, during sound check, which is, which is always kind of scary, but, but they were able to make some, some changes and I got it going.
It's serious.
Often it is always the, the most ended event. We also do, it wouldn't be a presentation, it's the council without me bringing up nightlights. One of my favorite things. This year we're going to have a little electric lighted train out there weather permitting. So I'll get you all the dance for that one, hot cocoa and the train as well as the lights. But anything about the lights out there, we've we tried to expand it a little bit two years ago and it was a disaster. It was just like five trees too many and it kept tripping all the time, constantly resetting breakers. So, so right now we're kind of where we are. It's a, it's a great, great show and it's something that I talk about a lot. We often do the flashlight, I had, is also a very popular event that we do out there and and it's just your playoffs. So we rent, we rent there were seven different groups that are at Piper, renting softball fields, soccer fields. They're getting volleyball, cricket out there. We, we work with a lot of different groups and we manage a lot of different kinds out there. We go out there a lot to meet with groups, show them space, settle disputes over, sounds ridiculous about boundaries, you know, their safety, they can't have a cross too close to soccer. And, and you know, when the high school rugby kids are out, we can't have them too close to this Pee Wee soccer. It's kind of a danger. So we do a lot of that, a lot of management of rentals out there. And one thing that I'm, I'm proud of, and I talk about this in my park and rec groups too, is that we really balance it with passive use. So there's a ton of rentals out there, but it's not just rentals. There's people out there that will have pickup soccer games. There's people out there that are just cashing, people that are just walking the path. I think pickleball, it's something that is a prime example of passive use. We have almost never been able to get a pickleball class going, but as you can see, there are a ton of people out there using the hordes. So it's something that I'm proud of at Piper Park because not every facility is like that. You'll go out to a lot of facilities and it's strictly rentals, nobody else out there. Or it's wide open passive use, which is also great too, but people aren't able to have sports out there. So here's a little breakdown of our revenue from the last fiscal year. And as you can see, the soccer fields are, are bigger. They're kind of rental that we do out there, all of course, the picnic tables. Funny thing about the picnic tables is that, so you have 30 tables out there and I want to say about 60% of this revenue comes from four of them. I'll get into that a little bit later. These are, what we're doing out here is a lot of what I call microtransactions. This is what can take up a lot of our time. Most of it's online, but a lot of people move out of there. So these are all $82 transactions, $300 transactions. So, so when you see the number in the 79,000 per year, know that that's a lot of, a lot of people in the community that are, that are making small purchases.
So if, oh, sorry Catherine, if you had to say on average, the transaction, what would you say the average transaction is? Okay.
Say around $30 for, for most rentals. So I'm thinking picnic at this point, which I think is 189 or starting with a low of 98 to 189. So I think it's somewhere in between.
Okay.
If we get into programs, which you can see here, which would be some of our theater programs, tennis programs, you can see the transactions go up a lot. So the rental cost for us over tennis leagues costs $400 to $500 per season. Theater costs 300 to 400. So to answer your question, it goes up for programming as opposed to rentals.
Yeah. Go ahead. Are they all transacted online?
Just about all of them.
Okay.
Hey, Nick, during COVID, we did not charge, if I recall, right, for a little while, while we were trying to when the restrictions were sort of changing around. I can't recall if we've, have we done an assessment of charges since then? I don't know if we have. I can't remember. Cause now we're back to charging after COVID, but I can recall the last time we did a fee schedule update there.
So you adopt the recreation fees as part of your annual adoption of all city fees?
Right.
The staff works with our consultant on fees to discuss whether they ought to be adjusted. And they will kind of work through that and then it gets folded in. I suspect it doesn't catch as much attention as when we talk about the larger fees in, say, planning and building.
Yeah. Okay. And you have better signage out there for making sure people reserve, I've noticed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, people are allowed to use the park just about any area of the park without reserving as long as it is not currently reserved.
Right. Are those signs in Spanish also? I can't recall. Yeah, in the picnic area. Okay.
One of our, so this is, yeah, recreation programs, tennis, art classes, theater, which I'll just see on the next slide. Make up the bulk of our, of our funding. Also, the field is a, it's a huge source of revenue for us and also pretty contentious about who gets what time zones, but still rules policy that really dictates, we still have to be out there. I'm drawing a blank on the fund that we pull that into.
We have, so the, the field and the gym are, were created by a grant from the state that required the city and the school district to partner. And so we operated for rental purposes after school hours and on the weekends. We have an agreement with the school district that we drop a fairly healthy percentage of the revenues into a fund to pay for maintaining and, and repairing those facilities. And I will tell you, that field is the one that surprises me. It's actually much more expensive to keep up than the gym. But I think we're dropping a minimum of 50,000 a year into those funds and we often put more in just because we anticipate issues over time.
Julie will present next, but I just wanted to go over a few things that I think that we benefit from by having a building and electrical upgrade at, at Piper. The electric vehicle charging stations went in a few years ago. I kind of wasn't really paying attention to it. And then I hear about them a lot. Hear about them not working. I hear from neighbors that love them. I hear from district staff that love them, so they're constantly used to have their day, they charge evening. So something that I kind of went in, I wasn't paying attention and they're really, really heavily used out there. So we have a bunch of different groups that use the recreation. I will say that they just started rehearsing. This, this happens in around three days a week. I'm very used to recreation programs and theaters in my 12 years. It's just that background, I've seen I have every single song that you could imagine. And every, every three years, they, the same do the same play. I, I know before the kids come. So some of the things that we could do with, with a better site at Piper Park is program during the day. Right now I'm struggling with program during the day on school campus. You have some senior groups that definitely uses the right abilities. People come in, you know, they think they're art classes, right? Classes, one of the challenging factors on current space on school campus during the day. It's also a challenge for mommy and the music classes, art classes. Usually feel good, good turnout for that. But again, being on the school campus makes an extra challenge. Get a lot of questions from people about picnic areas in the baby season. Before they feel like they can count it, but they want to have a private space. It's one of my best. And then as far as events, I think being out there is, you, you'll see me if you're at a amusement park or a puppy patch and we bump over. Just see me walk back. My office. I get a lot of steps in. And yeah, there's some of the things I'd like to do. I, I had mentioned in one of the previous slides that we are pulling most of that 60% of that revenue or area. It's a little bit because of the shade and where that is, but it's also because of bounce houses. So bounce houses are highly sought after. I can't tell you how many conversations I've had with people. Bounce house, different parks, playgrounds, both want them. So the way that they're doing bounce houses right now is they bring out a generator. And here at Laura, we allow two at any given time to be out there. And it's loud. And I think with an electrical upgrade out there, we could actually put, allow more bounce houses, no generators.
Nice picture. Any questions? Sure, Scott.
Couple of questions. First, can you help us understand, is this department revenue positive, neutral, revenue negative? Do we sell sponsorships to things? And do we, do you have any ideas of how, if it is not revenue positive, you know, little tweaks that can be made to, to make it more revenue positive?
Talk about cost recovery models in recreation and we're not gonna bring up any departments, but most of the time a food department can recover most costs. What a lot of other departments don't account for is, is the birds as well as, as well as management settlements. So often that's not accounted for. I think that our department does pretty well. I couldn't give you a percentage, but what we're recovering right now. But I'm sure we can work out those numbers.
Is it relatively revenue neutral? Is that the?
We're ten, been seeing as far as how much our, our expense is very well, very small sample compared to, to most, most other departments. Matter of fact, I think we're the smallest department in the county.
Which brings up another question, unless the city manager has
I just wanted to remind you because when you ask about this and if you decide to go try to compare us to another agency, some agencies include capital costs when they say cost recovery. Remember that in our setup and in a lot of the agencies in Marin, recreation is only programming. It has nothing to do with capital costs, other than the fact that I mentioned the administration pulls some of the rental revenue aside to put in a, a fund for capital improvements or maintenance. So when, when you're asking Nick about cost recovery, he's talking about to cover people and programming, not, not anything else.
May I follow up? Follow up question is, I noticed in one of the slides that we're comparing this park to other parks. It had a statistic about how many full-time employees are monitoring the park or taking care of the park. And it seemed that we were a little less than some other jurisdictions. Do you feel that that is a problem? Do you feel like you have sufficient staff to do what needs to be done? What's your thought on that?
We're able to manage what we have. I, I feel very strongly that if we're to grow, that we just want to grow programming and hire staff to, to help once it's grown. direction to, to move forward with kind of a, you know, for instance, if you want to see a large camping operated or for example, but, but, but most of the time I would like to see the programs grow and then hire staff.
Fair.
Can I just add?
Of course.
I want to acknowledge that Nick, I really pushed him when he became director to embrace a model that relies heavily on contract program providers. We used to do more in-house and there's pros and cons to that. But we knew we were going to be sort of in this two FTE position that we're in for a while. So we've heavily emphasized and rely a lot on outsiders to, to be the program providers with guidance from our staff. And we do a lot less in-house than we did before COVID, basically. So I think that's what you're referring to about bringing back is more of that in-house programming that can have a little bit more of a local touch.
Got it. Makes sense. Another question is, you know, when we're talking about a, a rec building that we're considering. Hypothetically, you know, there may be some space at the library for even another building, hypothetically. Do you think it is a negative to be across the street and down the block as opposed to right in where the Piper Park is and where the action's happening?
My first rule of behavior when I'm running events, as close as possible, I give my limit and, and resources are, are better. You can, you can saw the theater, you know, theater classes a lot like this. So I don't know proximity to a library that you really want a lot of these things. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
I, I think Nick's left out a service he provides because it kind of is his least pleasant service they've asked to provide. You know, parks and facilities in our model are actually public works responsibility. The public doesn't understand that and I wouldn't expect them to. So Nick is also public works liaison to the public. So what he's not mentioning that's an important value he provides is, I suspect if I empowered him right now, he could start telling you some wonderful stories about visits that he gets every single day from tennis players, pickleball players, parents, dog walkers, people who don't like dogs. So he is the intake for everything everybody is not happy about. And that's a, another reason it's really valuable that he's there. Sometimes they're happy, especially about lights. So, but I wanted to acknowledge that because that's kind of that unspoken staff responsibility that I'm not surprised Nick didn't tout, but I'm going to tout for him because we rely a lot on him and his staff person to do that.
Thank you. And Nick, thank you for those responses. Appreciate it.
I would just add, I think you didn't also tout the community garden. That is a fixture in Larkspur that's been there for 40 something, 50 years almost and very popular. So that's a, and a service that I know there was a separate management kind of of it, but I, I've seen you having to be a resource for community garden questions.
Yeah, that's a lot of time out there.
And last question that I have is what's the status of the old dog park? That we did have issues with that a couple, a year or two ago. Are we completed yet or did I just bring up a hornet's nest?
No, actually we have positive news there. You know, Julian's gonna be doing his presentation a little bit. He took the lead, but the two of us were able to work things out with the regulators and they are going to allow Public Works to restore the area to the way it was before we started digging and found the dump.
Okay.
For what people don't know, the, the not well-kept secret is that Piper was built on top of one of the old landfills. So it really was one of the county dumps for quite a while. And sometimes we're amazed how shallow the trash is. And we unfortunately discovered that the hard way when we were trying to restore wetlands where the old dog park was.
And just for the benefit also of people and maybe some of the newer council members, the mitigation of that dog park was part of the large package of the Bonner Bridge rebuild was we needed to, because we were creating greater hardscape there, we had to pull less, we had to replenish certain other areas. So the dog park was one of five mitigation projects. That old dog park was one of five mitigation projects. So I'm just curious about it because I, the fence is still up there, so I was wondering. Any other questions of this part of the presentation? No? Any questions from the community? Nobody's online and you guys know everything anyway, so. Thank you. So that brings us to part two.
Good evening. Good evening, Public Works Director Julian Skinner. I'm probably early on when I started working here, never follow the recreation director with a presentation, but it worked out, so. So while Nick focused on what rec does in the park, I'm gonna move over to the conversation of what should we do with the recreation department? Will we move out of the Larkspur Courtyard? This just highlights the space they're in now. In that building, it's about 1,920 square feet. There's a couple of private offices in there. There's a public counter and then they have some flex slash meeting space that I think is where Nick shared the video of singing. And looking at relocation, the prime location for recreation is to stay close to where they are now in Piper Park, close to, as Nick shared with the, the heat map where things are going on in the park. So if you look at this map here, Dory is running along the bottom, you see the tennis courts. And then the yellow star is just to the west of the main parking lot in Piper Park. Zoom in a little bit. So the bluish dash line here shows where we're looking at a relocation for recreation department. And the reason we chose this specific location within the park is I did a couple fold. One, this was the former site of Public Works trailer. So there's history of, of there being some city function on this location, which A means it's very flat and it's already been graded to some extent. So of all the areas in the park, it's one of the probably least expensive to, to build on. And it's also close to a couple of other things that we've been looking at in the park that have come up over time that I'll share a little bit on a slide. Just to the north of this location, it is one of two restroom buildings in the park. The mitigation project that you mentioned before renovated the smaller restroom that's over at the east end of the park that it didn't pay for renovating this park, so this restroom. So this one's quite old, it's got a lot of dry rot. And it really is indeed is some significant upgrades and in evaluating the condition of that restroom and all of the current ADA rules about sizing of bathrooms and everything. It's probably more cost efficient to build it now. And then the other infrastructure item that we've been looking at over time that's close to this location is our electric vehicle charger. So there are four public EV chargers shown with the yellow lighting bolts here that are at the west end of Piper Park. And then we've kind of been looking at a natural expansion of these EV chargers to the south of there. We could put another six.
Julian, I, just before you move on, I have two questions. When I've gone to Cal City's meetings before, they've often had some retailers who have sort of prefabricated restrooms for public parks. Is that something you can, would consider is they, they're pre-existing prefabricated ones that are sort of plopped down?
Yeah, there's different. So I do have a, a cost estimate in the staff report for a replacement.
Right.
Definitely on, on the high end of building like a concrete block, new restroom. As I'll kind of show you with the potential replacements for the rec offices, there's also different levels of restroom replacements from prefab up to the number that I showed you in, in the stat.
Okay.
Yeah, there are varying levels of, of improvements, different types of construction for
Yeah, the, the new one in Town Park, the brand new one that they just put in in Town Park has a lot of parts to it, which is, which I see that would be nice to have, which is accommodates a lot of different uses. My second question is, I remember the trailers for the Public Works Department that were, should I call them trailers? Is that the appropriate term or are they modular? Those are, they were like modular classrooms, they felt like. Are you, are we're looking at that same footprint size?
Not necessarily. There is, I think if I, I think there's a future slide that shows how big the flat area is.
Yeah.
That's out there. It's a little, it's the actual flat area is bigger than the trailer that was out there.
Oh, okay. Okay, thanks.
I just put the slide of the, of the restroom facility. There's three single occupancy bathrooms in there. There's also some public work storage in there. We don't keep any equipment. Most of our memories and everything that we keep at the courtyard, but we have some things that are used less frequently and a lot of the janitorial supplies that kept them up for the storage in this building. And there's just a close up on some of the ones, pretty typical wood rock around the structure. And again, if you were to build a standalone, probably in the $1 million range for a freestanding, say like a concrete center block restroom. And there are, yes, there are options to, to lower those costs if you go with someone's form. The other improvement that shows where the, there's currently two EV chargers or dual heads. So I mean, there's four chargers in total at this end of the park. One of the issues that, that Nick mentioned with this programming and the lights in the park is we've had a lot of electrical issues out there. And I know we get quite a few emails when the EV chargers go down. And unfortunately they take a long time to repair because we have to go to the vendor. But the power out there is, I would say, inconsistent at best. And so we have a number of times looked at, how can we get more reliable power out in Piper Park? And so if we just did a standalone project to add six EV chargers at this location, we're estimating that's about $450,000 project. So between the restroom upgrade and the EV and the electrical upgrades, there is actually some benefit in looking at these projects altogether, because there's some cost savings. But there's some, what would be duplication? what would be duplication if we did these projects and everything. So I'll focus on the building for now. This shows the potential footprint. So you see a white area and kind of a gray area below it. That's what we feel is a usable, buildable space out there that's flat and doesn't really need any grading. It doesn't get into many paths of travel or block any other use of the park. It's about thirty six hundred square feet, sorry, thirty three hundred sixty square feet of flat space. You'll recall, I mentioned that the recreation office is about nineteen hundred twenty. So what we did was we looked at a floor plan that was close to what they have now, a little bit bigger. And one of the reasons we're showing a proposed floor plan space here at twenty four hundred is because we're proposing to bring the new restrooms into this one building as opposed to having to remodel or renovate or reconstruct the other restroom building. It's more cost efficient to build those replacement restrooms in this structure. So it makes the structure a little bit bigger, but it's a lot more cost effective to do it in one project. And then how that twenty four hundred square feet is is split up is roughly the same fifty fifty split of office space and flex space that you have now. About a thousand square feet per each. And then for reference, this room is about a thousand square. And then the public restrooms, about three hundred and twenty square feet, including the storage. And then the gray area at the bottom is the remainder of that thirty three hundred sixty flat space that we're not proposing to make part of the first phase, but it would be available if there was a need to expand onto. This is a blow up. Now this slide is twisted ninety degrees. So now we're looking from Piper Park will be the parking lot will be below this. So you see on the right side here, what's shaded in blue is the office space and the restroom. So this is just a conceptual layout. And we worked with Nick on looking at some of the spaces, but it hasn't really fully embedded as what the final plan would be. But it's just a representation that we drew up, sort of put a cost estimate together. So what you see on the right end of the building is the public restroom. So there would be three there. One of them would be access for inside the building and the other two would be access from outside the building. So they would mimic the existing public restroom we have now that are single occupancy. And then the janitor space at the top there is people getting a storage area that would be having that building. And then you have a couple of private offices. You have a reception area and then some flex space with a counter. So there is, there would be room in there to add in a couple of workstations if you had temp staff or you had the need for some of the contractor the space. And then moving over to the left, kind of that first white area is what would propose is the the multipurpose or the flex space about a thousand square feet. And then the next space that has the dash line would be the available addition if you wanted to in the future.
So the current restroom building there has four single use, two on one side and two on the oh, three, because there used to be two women's on on the south side and two men's, I thought, on the north side.
One of the, so there were four in original.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So do you feel comfortable that a dub just using two, having two in an upgraded facility would be sufficient?
So that's what we base the cost estimate on. Again, we haven't done the full space planning for this.
Okay.
But the thought is that there would be two on the outside and we would have a sign that would say there's an additional public restroom available inside. So that one that's inside would be for staff or the public. The third one.
Oh, it says private, but yeah. Okay.
Would be, it would be public. It would be available for people that are using a multipurpose room too.
I see.
Outside to use the bathrooms. So that would be a public slash staff bathroom. And again, this, this is modular construction, so it's very flexible. This is the layout that we landed on. And, you know, whether we have three bathrooms or four bathrooms, it's something that's not really getting any type of cost out during. A lot would be good to discuss further. And then one of the things with this layout is what we're looking at is modular construction, which I'll show you on some of the following slides. That's why it goes kind of split up into twelve foot spaces and that's why we've got these odd square footage numbers. All the modules are about twelve by forty. So you basically stack them. And that's how we landed with this, this floor plan. Here's an example of kind of the higher end of what modular construction would be. So I'm going to share with you the cost in a moment, but I wanted to show you the images first. So when I go over the cost, you have a sense for what the difference is. This is all modular steel construction. It's a steel frame. It's on a foundation. So it's same as a a regular ground up construction in that it's attached to a concrete foundation in the ground. Steel walls, steel roof. What makes it modular is it's all built in a factory and then it's shipped. And then it's faster than traditional construction. Takes about eight months to do everything in the factory and it takes about a week to install it on the site. Whereas a ground up construction will be about a year starting to finish. The costs on these are variable because they're highly customizable and you can see there's a little pop out kind of the E line on one of these buildings and there's different colors of stock. I can do some different things with the window heights on both sides and to make them look less modular. This particular building is a part of the Salado County government offices. Airfield, I believe. This is kind of more of a traditional modular building. So a little bit of a step down. It's not as customizable and it's yeah, that kind of looks more like the modular. But again, it's on a foundation. It's a combination of linen and steel construction, less customizable. But it is, again, it's on a concrete foundation. So it's a permanent building. It just, you're going to end up with something that's definitely square and going to have, you know, a flat first light condition room. And it's going to look a little more peep cutter-ish. Those are kind of the two permanent options. We also looked at some temporary options. This is kind of the low end of what we might do out here. And this is similar to like the public works trailer. So typically if you install these on a kind of a semi-permanent state, you put a skirting around the bottom. So you don't see the wheel and all of that stuff. But this is your basic mobile trailer. Not too different from the one you see out at the library side, the contractor, right, for the duration of the project. So these are rentable and you can also purchase them. This shows two staircases, but obviously if it was going to be city offices, you would have a GTA access ramp up to one of one of these doors. This is not, it's fixed to the ground, but it's not fixed with a foundation. It just has eggs and pins. Kind of like it would be fixed to the ground. It has hookups for electrical and the water and the sewer and everything. So it functions like a regular building. But it's, it's, it's very temporary and, you know, walls are hollow and a lot of things. It's, it's going to feel like a temporary building and it's going to look like a a step up from that is to go to like more of a mobile classroom. So you see a couple of these over at Tamaescale High School that they put in the parking lot. So this is kind of like a double wide or a triple wide trailer. But they're seen together and they're a little bit more configurable. So you know, for temporary installation where I showed you the trailer, there's not really any provision for flex space in here. You basically go with like your two offices, you've got a bathroom and you've got room for a copy or a file or whatever, but there's not really any of that flex space with that dignity room opportunity with the trailer. Whereas you can work those in to your floor plan if you move up to a, to a classroom size. This particular floor plan only shows two restrooms in it, but these are also somewhat customizable. You can put private offices in them too. But again, these are not on a foundation. They are anchored to the ground, but it's not a true foundation with anchor home like the, like the building.
A question, Julian, the option here, I think in square footage was like fourteen hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it, is that also customizable? Like, could you make it two thousand?
Yeah, they're modular. So you can go, I think the next step that we actually looked at is twenty four hundred square feet. But depending on the manufacturer, there's a number of different manufacturers and they all have their standard sizes. Typically, it's a twelve foot, they all come in twelve foot width units because that's the size you can fit on a trailer and travel legally on the streets. But the lengths are what varies. That kind of gives you some of the difference where footage is depending on what manufacturer you go with.
And neither, oh, you're done? Neither of the recreation option, alternative options of the mobile trailer or the classroom have restroom facilities in them.
They have restrooms, but we're not proposing in the cost estimates I'm going to provide you.
Yeah.
We've just sized the trailer option, the least cost option. We've just sized it for recreation staff. For the classroom option, we've sized it for the staff plus some flex space, but not to bring all of those restroom replacements from the existing restroom into that building.
Got it.
This is a temporary option.
Got it.
Sorry, sorry, Julian, I'm back to the, the, you know, going up to twenty four hundred. So can you help me with the math here? So is this kind of like Lego? Because if you have a twelve foot width, it'd have to be two hundred feet long. So are we, you know, how do we get twenty four hundred feet?
They're basically stacked end to end. So you usually keep whatever the the width is, whether it's a thirty six or a forty, the length they come on. And then you just start stacking twelve foot sections until you get to the increment that's closest to the one you want. So.
And then you have. Okay, but but you have to, you can put like entryways between the two stacked units or something or?
So they build them however you want them typically, like in this floor plan you see here, there's dotted lines where the units would have been. If you order one of these, it does not come with walls where those dotted lines are. So they take the three, they put them together and they remove the walls where each trailer meets. So it makes one open space. You can get them with one of the walls still there if you, if that serves your function because you want some private offices in one of those twelve foot spaces. So they're, they're somewhat customizable, but again, for the most part, you can purchase these, but I've also shown a rental option. For the most part, they're rentals. So they don't get highly customized because when you're done with them, they need to rent them to somebody else. And they don't want to undo something that you did specifically to your location.
And and would it be fair to estimate, you know, the seven hundred twenty was twenty five thousand a year? You know, fourteen hundred was double that. So if we went to the twenty four hundred, it might be something to the tune of seventy five to a hundred thousand a year. Okay, thank you.
So this is a slide that captures each of those options and puts a price tag to them. For the rental options of the trailer or the mobile classroom, I presented first what an annual cost would be because those are more of a short term solution. There's two components to those costs. There is a fixed cost. They have to set it up. They have to put the ramps in, connect the sewer and the water. And then at the end of the rental, they have to haul it away and disconnect everything. So starting with the rental mobile trailer, it's twenty five thousand dollar fixed cost. And then it's twenty five thousand dollars for each year that you rent it. So if we had it out there for four years, it would be a hundred thousand dollars in rental fees plus the twenty five thousand to set it up and then haul it away at the end. If you're going to use one of these for a long, long term, they do offer them for sale. That's covered in the staff report. I believe this option is about two hundred thousand if you were to buy this outright. Not have to keep paying rent.
Sorry to interrupt. Can I ask a quick question about that? What is the life of one of those if you bought it in terms of how long would it last?
Really depends on how well you take care of it. What I'm told is after about ten years, it'll really show its age and they don't have much resale value. There are ones out there that are older than that. It just kind of depends on how much maintenance you're willing to put in. And again, it's, these are not built for the long haul. So there's only certain things that you can fix too, like they're not stud walls. There's no foundations. So you can fix things on them, but if you have things that just wear out quickly, they're going to keep wearing out. There's not really good solid repair strategies for these. So I would say it'll still look relatively new, probably for up to five years, but once you get beyond ten years, it'll, it'll feel like a whole.
Okay.
Julian, one other question. You know, the Corder Madera Neil Cummins School has those temporary buildings. I think they're probably the same as Tamaescale. The, which of those options was that again?
So for the, I can't speak for the school in Corder Madera, but the yeah, the ones at Tamaescale are portable units, so they're not on a foundation.
Okay.
So they are rental. They're renting them from one of the companies that we got prices from.
Okay. So this is what you said should be about a ten year life?
Ten year max.
Yeah. And they've been there for as long as I've lived there, fifteen years.
Well, I'm talking about the new portable ones in the parking lot at Tamaes.
Not that long.
Okay, okay. Then we're talking about different.
Yeah, there's different ones that. Yeah, the Neil Cummins ones are, are, I think they've been there a while.
Okay, thanks.
So that option, the classroom option at fourteen hundred square feet has a slightly higher fixed cost, sixty five thousand. And then it's fifty thousand per year. These things are modular. So yeah, you can probably estimate for the purpose of our discussion tonight, about a twenty five thousand dollar increment for each unit size you go up in. You know, we can fine tune those numbers if there's a specific direction that we would like to look at. And then again, for, for these options, this doesn't include any upgrade to the power. So we know the power is an issue now. If we put a new permanent building, as you're going to see in the next two modular options, we would definitely want to upgrade the power for a permanent building. Wouldn't necessarily need to for a mobile and the power upgrade, as I showed you on the EV slide, is over four hundred thousand dollars. So that's a hefty investment for that temporary building location. You know, the, the power out there is from time to time, it's, it's been problematic. So I would anticipate that, you know, the powers we have it now is not ideal for one of the mobile options. But, you know, we can make it work much like we're making everything else. And then there's also, these two options don't include any incorporation of new restrooms other than what's within the space itself for the use of that space. Mainly because these are considered the temporary. If we don't want to commit to one of the permanent third or fourth options, either your lower cost options. And so we have to put those additional improvements into these two options. Those numbers are provided in the, in the staff report if you want to look at what it would cost to add those on to one of those lesser costly options. Again, the power is four hundred to five hundred thousand, depending on whether it's part of a bigger project or it's a standalone. And the bathroom is, you know, depending on what level of finish you want, what kind of building you want, is in the half million to, you know, one point two range. The next two options that I showed you, the modular buildings, these are permanent structures. They just have, they're built offsite and they're brought in. So they're kind of like a big director set. The basic modular, the one that I said is probably going to look like a modular, but again, there's different finishes you can add on to these that will make them look not so modular. So you can kind of consider these, this is a range for a modular solution. It's quite large. It's going to be in a three million, the three and a half million dollar range. The three and a half million dollar is going to be the one that's all steel and it's customizable. These numbers do include the permanent power upgrade. Mostly because if we're going to put a permanent building in there, then we would want to upgrade the power. It also includes if we're going to bring new power all the way in from Dory, because that's where the, the closest reliable source of power is. Then it would make sense to upsize that power to put those electric vehicle charging stations. So these numbers you see here incorporate the six new electric vehicle chargers, upgrading the power which will also benefit all the other power needs in the park. So Nick won't have to run out and troubleshoot the lights in the park on the trees as much. And then we'll have an opportunity to add power options in the picnic area and other areas of the park that may power for, for other program. And then the other thing that's included in this three million to the three point five million number is incorporating those restrooms into the, into the building. So it's, it's a lot less expensive to add bathrooms into the building than build a whole separate new restroom building. So I think that is.
Okay, so that's a lot of material. Um, the staff recommendation was for us to receive the report with a budget and return with a two options. Return with a budget amendment for one of the options presented. Or return with additional information on one multiple or new options. So that's sort of what the staff recommendation is. Um, has there been, um, has this been vetted by Park and Rec? Or does it need to do by our commission? Does it need to? Cause this is a CIP.
The Park and Rec Commission on something like this is advisory. It'd be at the discretion of the council if you wanted to send it down to them for that.
Okay.
Um.
And then.
I, I suspect though, the part of their answer would be they would like the recreation department to have somewhere to go.
Right. And then you also presented, uh, one page of, uh, the general fund balance report. Is there anything you want to add on that before we start discussion?
We wanted to make sure the council was aware of what is, uh, the. Unassigned or uncommitted portion of the general fund reserve for capital so that you had that perspective as you have this discussion. So that's why we provided that sheet. Um, you know, it's. The challenge for you as the stewards of the taxpayer money is a dollar spent on this is not a dollar spent somewhere else. So you have to. Think about that in the context of investment and, you know, the return of service. And those are difficult. That's kind of why the staff recommendation is have a discussion tonight.
So in this, uh, general fund, um, balance report. The estimated unallocated general fund reserves for CIP is seven million, one hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred and forty two. I just want people to know that that's the number.
And as a reminder, that's a, that's a pretty sizable number for a city like Larkspur and that reflects, uh, partly the. The disposition of the bridge fund and partly the fact that we built up large cash reserves to deal with. Uh, how we have to construct the library, how we have to float the cash.
Right.
But at the end of the year, that's what should be available as unallocated.
So, um, I think I wish we, we should do is begin with any questions we all have of either the city manager or the public works. Would you like to start, Sarah?
Sure, sure. Yeah, as the new council member, I would love to ask you the question about that seven million, one hundred and ninety thousand. Is that allocated then just for capital projects or could we transfer that, say we needed it for something else?
So, um, the assignments within the general fund are entirely by council policies. So you can change your policy decisions at any time. What you've instructed us to do is we set, we essentially have to set aside twenty five percent of the general fund reserve. Uh, at all times by policy.
Okay.
And then each time a dollar comes in to the general fund reserve, so essentially at the end of the year, if we have fund balance. Um, we filter it through a policy you adopted and we make sure that certain other. Uh, needs are protected. So, uh, we have a little bit we now set aside in case we need it for pension or, uh, other. Retirement commitments that we've made for some of our employees. Uh, we have some for some specific capital needs. And then whatever dollars are done after that, they sit in this unallocated category. Your policy says it's the preference of the council that the unallocated money be thought of as capital money.
Okay, thank you.
And sorry, ju- just to.
Anything further, Sarah, on that?
Not on that specific.
If I, if I could just follow up on that, so we're on the same page. Uh, there is a policy to have, I believe, twenty five percent of the annual budget set aside. That is separate from this seven million. Is that right?
That's allocated. So this seven million is unallocated.
That's in addition to the reserves.
In addition to all those allocations, we still have seven million.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask another question about the general fund, um, balance? Um, so the three point three million general fund operating balance, fund one hundred slash seven hundred. So is that op, is that to be used for operating cash flow or is that excess operating cash flow that is now currently? Um, that might potentially go into the general fund? The three point three five eight million.
It's in the top chart area. Yeah, in the very top. So un- under date, um, six thirty twenty twenty five, fund one hundred, seven hundred. Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. It says operating cash flow. There's a footnote three next to it. So is that? Is that reserved for operations or is that excess operating cash flow that will eventually end up in the general fund? If we don't use it for operating purposes?
Sure, I responded this correctly. These are Ms. Gabrielle's notes. Um. So the way she's trying to reflect with that upper part is that is the operating balance. That is going to flow into its, out, I believe into the allocated category. So. It's essentially fund balance that's going to help shore up the general fund reserve dedicated to the general. Fund operation account. So that's that six point five million that's down below, but I'll have to check with her. I don't have, I don't want to give you the wrong answer, so. Um, can I get back to you on that one?
Okay, yes, absolutely. Um. So I guess the next question is, you know, if we had a. You know, I, I don't know, if, if there was something happening and we're way off budget and they operated the regular operating budget. And we need to dip into reserves. So we would be dipping into the six point five million. Is that where that would come from or would we dip into the seven point one nine?
So the six point five million eh, is then broken down into two separate categories that again, were created by council policy. Um, roughly fif- if I have the numbers correctly, fifteen percent is strictly to dip into if we, if we go red. Per year. So that's what fifteen percent of it's for. Ten percent of it. And I apologize if I have this juxtaposed, but I think I have it correct. Ten percent of it is catastrophic loss of revenue. That needs to be addressed immediately. They, I think that part of the policy the council created, the, these policies have been in place for a long time. Uh, was the idea that, for example, a shopping mall shuttered and suddenly we had a huge loss or a business just left town. That was a major revenue generator. The idea was you'd have a pot of money to deal with that problem quickly. Um, so that's six point five is where we would go to first for a lot, if the general fund ran in the red.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, Julian, are there, when we talked about the library and community center and EV charging, there were some grants available? Are they still out there for? Um, or are there any grants that exist for these type of projects?
Um, there are today. Um, well, there are rebates, not grants.
Rebate, rebates, yeah.
Rebates that are available today. Uh, but how they work is you have to have them installed, uh, where you can apply for the rebates.
I see.
Given that if we move forward with this project today, it would be, you're out. I can't say what would be available, but there have been various. EV charging rebates available for quite some time in different forms. So. I find it hard to believe there wouldn't be a rebate of some description from one of the entities. Um, MCE, PG, TAM have all had EV charger rebates in some form at some point. Um, there's also a PGNE rule twenty nine program, um, that can pay. Uh, for a portion of bringing the PGNE power to your EV chargers. Um, which has always been one of the bigger impediments to getting EV chargers because the chargers themselves, you know, twenty thousand dollars, but. Sometimes it costs half a million to get your power to the site. So there's a new PGNE program. That potentially could pay, uh, so that four hundred fifty thousand dollar number is if we didn't get any rebates or didn't, uh, apply for the. Or didn't, um, didn't comply with the PGNE rules for their, uh, rebate rule twenty nine. So that number could come down depending on the level of those rebates and, and grants. Um, the PGNE program, um, they won't know, tell you exactly how much you get until you go through an application process and you have a project. So.
Of course.
Why I haven't really shown anything on there.
That's fine. That's fine. And the, um. Timeline, we're, we're not, I'm not clear on what the timeline is. We know we are going to be vacating the offices that, that we. Um, are participate with, with the school district and we're in, are we in an eighteen month window for that or we're not really sure?
Um. So the district's already taken the space they absolutely needed to have right away.
Okay.
And we, that's why we had to cut the community room in half because we moved people.
Right.
Into half of the community room to make it office space. When the library leaves city hall, we will bring back the staff that's not. Dedicated solely to recreation. We have other staff down there. So they'll come back to this building. Um, and the district will take that space at that time. And basically they, we have sort of a, a general understanding that the two staff people kind of. Now be surrounded entirely by district people with an intent that they leave as soon as they can.
Okay.
So again, they've been very friendly about this. This is.
I know, I get it. And the other timeline you sort of said was these, one of these modular options, it's like eight months development within the, the manufacturing. Two weeks to install. So we're really looking at a window of probably a year.
Yeah, when you account for the project development upfront.
Yeah.
For example, determine how many bathrooms we would actually have in one of these buildings. Uh, there's probably four months upfront and then I would allow eight months for, uh, manufacturing and construction on site. So probably. From yes, let's do this to, uh, opening the building, probably just a little bit over a year.
Okay, Scott, you have questions?
Yes, I do. Alright, let's start with the, uh, the question about the grant funding. Um, other than EVs, is there, uh, have we looked into grant funding for? Building a municipal building, you know, for the actual building of the, the facility as it was just EVs?
Been looking for twenty years. Now and then, like we did get a grant for the library, obviously, um, but. There are other things, but we'll, obviously we'll take a look and see what's out there and talk to our, our partners, but there's. There's very few, uh, grants for city office space, perhaps the community room component of it, maybe, you know, um.
Where if we make it, if we make it like earthquake safe and that's like a, you know, what, wasn't there a grant, uh, that went towards the library, but it had to be. Kind of a room that people, a community gathering room that was safe for earthquakes.
Yeah, maybe, but there would be an incremental project cost to build to that standard that the grant probably would cover that incremental cost and, and not.
I just had an idea on that.
Go ahead.
Just given the slides that Nick showed us about who actually comes to this park, I mean. This, you know, can we reach out to other jurisdictions or maybe the county to see whether they might partner with us? In terms of covering some of these costs. I mean, I feel like, you know, the residents of Larkspur, we're paying for this, but really Piper Park is an amenity that. You know, people from all over Marin come and, you know, experience and enjoy. So I don't know, maybe. We could reach out to the county and see if there's any money.
We can always ask. I've been told the answer is no unless you ask. Um, there is a fuzzy, challenging to decipher document from roughly nineteen seventy. When, uh, the idea of Piper Park was becoming a reality where the county. Partly in recognition of having run the dump there, um, agreed to build the ball fields. And they paid for the construction of the ball fields, uh, in their entirety. But in the document, it talks about Larkspur agreeing to run the park as a regional facility. Um, but the language is, it, I, I don't know how legally binding at the end of the day this all is, but. I have always been told Larkspur sort of committed to the idea that Piper Park would be this open park to the Marin community. So just bear that in mind as we, as we pursue that, but I never heard staff. You know, another thing I'd point out, um, I'm going to put Mr. Skinner on the spot because I haven't really talked to him about this, but, um. We take in about a hundred thousand dollars a year from Measure A park money. Um, we've been the, in my opinion, I've heard, you've heard me brag here about this. I feel we've been the most disciplined of the cities. In terms of spending that money in very clear ways in each of our community parks. We've tou- after we've finished some upgrades in Green Bay School Park, we will have spent measuring money in all of the neighborhood parks. And I think that's commendable. Uh, but because of COVID and some other issues, we've actually built a little bit of money up in that fund. Um, and there's no, the way that language was crafted, you are allowed to. Let it build up to use towards a larger project. And this is very much within the spirit of the Measure A money too. So one op- option would be to front the expense of whatever choice you make. And then use the Measure A money over time to re- repay the general fund for that investment.
Do you know how much that would be per year?
It's about a hundred thousand that we get each year. So it obviously take a little while.
Take a while.
To do that, but it could be you for a contribution for a part of it. You know, you, you have to think of any capital project, once you, particularly once you get into seven figures. We're drawing from different buckets and we're just trying to figure out, you know, what pencils the most without affecting other things that we want to accomplish.
Yeah, Scott.
Uh, can you just confirm that, that City of Larkspur owns the land that the building's going to be built on?
Yes, it does. Um, there is, um, there's a, a parcel line between the city and the school district. That basically runs up right the side of the softball, not softball field, the, uh, all weather field. Um, and then it jogged around the all weather field, everything kind of. South and west of that is school district and then everything else is the city. Um, and we actually had to do that research with one of the recent grants that we received when there was a Cal Prop sixty eight. Uh, grant funding for parks, they required proof of city ownership of the parks that were being improved.
Okay, thank you. Um, question, EV charging stations, are they revenue neutral? Once they're built to, do we get any money for having them? Do we have to pay money? Are we giving discounts? How does that work out?
On the policy, so the policy that's in place now is probably dated, I would say, and was based on what PGNE rates. Were at the time and what our understanding of lot maintenance and repair costs would be. And. We're actually, staff is in the process now of looking again at what our EV charging. Uh, what our EV rates are and bringing something back for your consideration. Uh, we currently charge, uh, per hour. Which you were required to do by law at the time that we adopted our fees. Um, the. The law has since switched and now you're required to charge by the kilowatt hour. So it needs to be updated and as part of that process, we'll be doing some. Analysis of what our PGNE bills are, what our maintenance, um, costs are. Uh, we have a third party that does the billing, so they take a chunk of what people pay, uh, when they pay to use those, so. Um, and then we'll bring those numbers to you and then there can be a conversation on, you know, whether there's some subsidy or whether it's cost, cost neutral. But we'll bring you what the actual numbers are.
Alright, and we, we have the discretion to have a policy of what we charge for the use of those. Is that right? Okay. Alright, uh, next question, uh, Nick, just real quick, um. The bathrooms, you, you can just sit there. Have there been complaints that we don't have enough bathrooms? Uh, are, are we happy kind of replicating the number of bathrooms that we currently have?
Come up to the.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Else he can't get the recording.
Yeah, do not get com- um. Complaints about the number of, of bathrooms there, uh, most recently the Battle of the Dad Band sponsored by the Larkspur Chamber was out at, at Piper Park. And they brought in, uh, portables for, for a large event at that time. Any given time, I, I don't think that there's lines for any of the bathrooms outside of, um, large events. And those are usually based in the picnic area.
And they're very clean. I go, because I walk the park almost every, every day almost and they keep them well maintained.
Alright, that, that was my only question for Nick. Anyone have, well, Nick's up here. Any other questions for Nick? Alright, and my only other question is for Dan, which is being the fiscal conservative that you are. Um, I was curious if you felt that dropping three point five million dollars for a building. Um, knowing all the other things we have on our plate, uh, if that would be fiscally irresponsible or. Uh, you think that we are funded sufficiently at this point to be able to spend that kind of money and still carry on our other activities?
So. Uh, what I would say is we've worked really hard as a team for each of the, what I would say are the big bucket. Infrastructure issues for the city. to build long-term sustainable plans. So that the roads, I think we feel like we have now a way of sustaining the roads in perpetuity. We're now working on the storm drains and getting them to a place where they're, where they need to be. And we have a sustainable path to maintain them, so I feel good about that. Now we're getting into one-off challenges. This building is a one-off challenge. This amount of money's not, you know, we don't have enough money to solve this building. We have a portion of it maybe. It's hard for me to totally answer your question because I don't know what you or future council might envision as a one-time investment to provide something to the community. So I guess I'd answer it this way, I think it's a prudent decision, particularly in the context of everything we provide to people in Piper Park. And what I have always understood, we want to provide to people in using that amenity. What I can't know is what that sort of opportunity cost is that we're losing for some other thing that we might want to do down the road.
Well, let, let me ask you this, just from a financial perspective, and Stephanie, maybe you're better first to ask this one, is if we drop 3.5 million in building this nice building and we own the property, it increases our property value by some amount, which I assume at some point if we needed to take out a loan or something like that, would go towards our, you know, uh, net worth as a city? I mean, is that accurate?
So actually, uh, that's an interesting uh, statement to make. This is, if we were to do one of the more expensive options, this sum of money is very similar to the private placement loan amount we took to invest in our courtyard and we've been paying that with a very, interest rates were really good when we did that particular loan, but um, interest rates are still pretty good, so that's an option we could look into.
Oh, no, I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, I, maybe I didn't.
So where you were going.
Yeah, no, no, it wasn't shoot and tear a loan. The question is, in the future, is the.
It's another asset.
Yeah, I, I mean, if we're investing 3 million dollars into a property that we own, at the end of the day, the portfolio that Larkspur has.
Oh, I see.
Would increase, maybe not by 3 million, but it, it, it's kind of an investment in our city, which at some point, if we needed to get some type of financing for something, it would increase our assets.
Yes, so I, and I'm sorry, misunderstood what you were, um. All the buildings that we own give us something that we can post essentially, if you put it in so parlance, similar to private world. Uh, we could post as collateral against debt. That, we use different mechanisms a lot of the time in, in the public world, but that's effectively.
Okay.
Correct, yes.
That's, that's why I have Madam Mayor.
So I, I guess, Julian, this, I'm just sort of curious about the cost. Like, I, I think of the cost per square foot and like the houses going up in the neighborhood. And, you know, to get a $3 million home, which is fully decked out luxury kitchen, you know, it's about the same square footage. Is there some way to bring down the cost? I mean, I'm sure you've already done that homework, or maybe just explain why it's what it is.
Yeah, there are some variables to the cost and there's also some fixed parts to the cost that are part of uh, being governed. So one of the biggest cost differences between public and private projects is that uh, as a city, we're required to pay prevailing wage for construction out on the site. And so, um, I can't give you the exact number, it varies based on what the labor is, but it's a, it's a, it's not an insignificant cost bump um, in labor costs. And then, um, the, the other is, in a lot of um, private instances where you're looking at buildings, a lot of the site works already been done. If you're looking at a house when the subdivision was created, they gave you, you know, a pad. In this location, even though there used to be a public works trailer there, if we're building a, a foundation, there is earthwork and there is some grading that needs to occur. And so the cost per square foot, um, so for example, this 3.5, if you look at that, that's about 1,400 dollars a square foot. There's other costs that are built into that. For example, there's the 400,000 in PGE upgrades that are built into that 3.5 number. So it's hard to take that and flip it into a, a square foot, dollar per square foot. The raw cost for, if we just bought that high-end modular building and didn't have to do all the site work, didn't have to do the electrical, uh, didn't have to bring the water and sewer in, um, is just over 1,100 dollars a square foot. And that's, you know, for modular construction, the other thing is this, this size of the building for a, a public project is, is kind of small. So the library, for example, was about that cost and it's, it's ground up, but these costs are a little bit higher. Because I understand relative to the size of the house, it doesn't seem like it's small, but uh, for a public project with the kind of contractors that are gonna get on these jobs, it's a relatively small project size, so it has a, a higher price point. The numbers I'm giving you are all inclusive too, includes all design, the consultant's staff time, so that's all wrapped in. So that's something to consider if you're trying to calculate a, a dollar per square foot makes sense.
So, so part of it is just, we don't realize the economies of scale that we have at the library. Um, two more questions. Um, one is, what about the possibility? You know, what I'm thinking is, we're spending a lot, like, you know, we're looking at this building and, and it, it kind of is hard for me to see. Uh, you know, I see the historical value and I was a part of, you know, really pursuing this building as an option because of its, you know, heritage and historical value, but we are really spending a lot on office. And what I'm wondering is, you know, we're gonna have freed up space here. Could Public Works possibly put some of their people here and Parks put some of their people in Public Works, which is right next to the park?
I mean, in theory, yes, but I think listening to, to, to Nick, even though Public Works is maybe closer than this building, it's still not as proximate to the site as he would want to be after cross-doorie every time he went back and forth to Piper, which is not ideal, but.
Yeah, there's, that, that's a very complicated question. I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure, at least with the TAM district actually would allow what you just said to occur. It was a very specifically negotiated deal around citing the courtyard. So, um, even if we decided we would live with that idea of rec being in that location. Also, I don't know how, when the last time you visited the courtyard during a school day was, but you take your life in your own hands sometimes going back there, uh, because of the way people drive in and out of Tamskal. So it wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be a visitors, a positive experience for people visiting the rec office.
I see. I just thought it might give some, you know, uh, flexibility in the 700 to 1,400 to 2,400 equation, that's all.
Yeah, I, I understand. I just, it's just a little more complicated. We need time to go look at that.
Um, last question, um, Nick, actually for you, I mean, I'll, I'll just, you know, I've been sitting here listening to this and from the beginning of the presentation. I mean, you know, first I want to thank you because I, I think the parks are doing amazing and I think, you know, even without the data, you know, I know how important and popular that park is and I, I think I speak for the council, we really want to support you. But, you know, what constraints are under, I mean, we have this building, we have two fire stations, you know, we have increasing, you know, police salaries. If, if it weren't feeling like the pie is shrinking, I, I would, you know, I, I, whatever you need. But maybe you can tell us from your perspective, I mean, you're in a building right now that's, you know, I, I don't think the Larkspur Corte Madera School Building is, is, I don't know where it would fit on those options up there, but it's not that great. I think it's a pretty old building. And, and, you know, what do you think is like the minimum viable infrastructure for you? You know, I, I, I don't know if that's the fair way to ask it, but, you know, knowing our budget constraints, maybe you can, maybe turn the question around. What is it that you think really helps you succeed and what might you be able to do without? Like, I think an EV charger doesn't really matter to you directly. You know, I understand there's an economy of scale and I, I'm really supportive of electrified, wish we had them in all the apartment buildings, et cetera. But, you know, here we are trying to support Parks and Rec, so there's that. And then the bathrooms, I think, you know, Scott's question was great, you know, so it's not really a pressing issue. I mean, I think we need good bathrooms, but the new one down by the volleyball courts is great and, and I don't see a big line there whenever I'm there. So, so again, back to the question, you know, what do you need from, you know, what, what would you say in all this would, would really be a minimum for support?
There's office space, you know, I, I started my career at the, the YMCA, if you don't, if you don't know that, and Terry Linda, I shared an office the size of this area over here with four people, it was a pass-through to the pool. I can work in a, in a bunch of different areas. What, um, what I see working in Park and Rec and, and kind of what I've built my career around is, is what serves the community. That room, the community room, especially before COVID, is used so heavily and we get constant asks from people to, to use it for uh, little league meetings, um, Toastmasters use it, we have church groups that use it, a lot of senior groups that use it. The walkers have their parties there in the winter. So really, I think, in order to provide something, if we were to put a building out there, I think that providing a service to the community is really what I'm looking for.
Okay, and I mean, uh, thank you, yeah, that, that's, um, and I mean, my, my thought is kind of back to funding, like, you know, I don't see, you know, I, I think it's hard to convince people to fund office space, but what you said, I think, is almost like the pitch for the library, like the commons. You know, I mean, there's, there's a real value there and I know how hard people fought for the space over at, you know, in Green Bay, you know, the, the landing over there, which, um, you know, I was involved in some of that, so, um, but yeah, that, thank you for that answer.
But office, but the office need there is essentially for two staff people at this point, which is not an enormous amount of office space. But every time I'm over there, the, it's packed with Hall Middle School kids after school for all these activities. And during the day, as you described, I mean, I was just here on Friday with you and there were the Larkspur walkers and, and others who, so it's a utilization much broader than just office?
Accessibility to, to, to city staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would Larkspur Corte Madera Schools be, I mean, if, if a lot of their kids are using it, is there any chance they'd be willing to, you know, share some of this?
I can always ask. I, I do want to recognize, uh, they do some very creative things to free up money to meet their portion of our obligations to maintain the gym and the field. And sometimes their economic gymnastics are loud enough that we hear them grumbling. So we know they work hard just to free that money up, you know. I purposely chose not to be in the world of education because I don't want to deal with how crazy and restricted it is. And so I don't want to fathom or guess how much discretionary money they actually have. I doubt it's a lot. But they, you know, one thing to bear in mind, they are also an entity that steers a lot of our customer base into, into the use. I think one thing Nick didn't mention too, that I just want to emphasize about that community room. And some of the uses that he mentioned, a Toastmasters, uh, even the walkers, although the walkers like being at the park. You know, those are quiet uses that potentially could migrate to the library. There's a lot of noisy things that he rents out to that just aren't gonna work in the library. And I do think that's our target here, is to provide a room somewhere for those noisier elements. One thing that, uh, we used to do quite a bit too, is we had a teen drop-in room, which is different than what we're providing in the library. The kids could just be kids, basically. We were kind of like almost a babysitting after-school service for the, for the kids at Hall Middle School. It's noisy to offer them that sort of lounge experience. Those are things we just can't do over at the library.
So, um, before we kind of elaborate more on this discussion, I want to open this up for public comment, if there's anybody. Yeah, I, I saw you moving to the edge of your chair, so, um, I, I know we have one hand raised. We've had a robust discussion, no, no, go ahead. We've had a robust discussion and until, before we dive sort of into more of what our direction is, I wanted to, yes. I wanted to hear from public comment. I know we have one person here and one online, which I think is.
Mr. Holm. Madam Mayor, Council. Um, first I want to go back to Nick's, um, presentation earlier.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, Jean Fidel, Larkspur Plaza Drive. I'm a Park and Rec Commissioner and I am the Executive Director of the nonprofit that supports Park and Rec, which is the wrecking crew. First, I want to go back to Nick's presentation and I would urge you, when it comes up, um, next fiscal year, to look at the fees. I think, and it's on our agenda, which is 12 hours from now at our meeting. We're gonna look at starting, uh, looking at a large event permitting, I believe is on our agenda on Thursday. Um, and how those fees are processed for large events that happen in the park specifically. Um, so I would urge you, I know it's low on the agenda when you're looking at bigger, bigger ticket items, but I'd urge you to look at the fees that are charged for parks and rentals and those things, especially if we're looking at a 3.5 million dollar building, which is my vote. And then, uh, to Julian's presentation, thank you, it was great, I love all the buildings. To look at power, um, as we said, we have music in the park, lights, it's constantly going off and on for the bands, the power is always going off. And then for lights, which is my favorite thing that happens in the park. And if you've had a conversation with me about lights in the park, you know that I have much bigger plans for lights in the park and I would love to have ice skating in the park one day, um, for the lights and that means power. As Julian has heard me mention many times, we need more power in the, in the lot to, um, parking lot to, uh, keep the ice frozen, because I don't want real ice. And, um.
I got an old dog park maybe to go on.
If you've spoken to me at any time when the lights are up, I, my comment is always, it would look much better if there was an ice skating rink here, it's small. Um, and then the only thing I didn't hear in, uh, the presentation was, and we've talked about it a great deal with the library, was, um, place for storage. As someone who carted cases of wine in and out of the park at every music in the park, it would be great if there was somewhere for me as wrecking crew to store event supplies that I use in and out, because it was, for anything. We have quite a bit of supplies that we've developed over the last couple of years to support the events that we support for Park and Rec. And it'd be great if there was some storage space for wrecking crew to be allowed to keep. And, um, the other thing is, I didn't hear anywhere, everyone sort of had an idea of funding for this. Having just come off very successful 5 million dollar plus funding for the commons, no one talked about going to the community and what might be raised out in the community. And Nick very well pointed out that the community uses the park and the rentals. Have we thought about asking the community to help support this event? And the wrecking crew would be there to help raise that money if that was something that we wanted to look at, or even long-term going forward to that, so.
Great. Thank you. And I've seen Dick Whitley out there helping you tote the wine. In his kilt. I, anyone else in chambers? No. Uh, I see one hand online, can we do our one person? Thank you, you can unmute.
Um, James Holm, like, James Holm, Larkspur. I remember years ago, there was a big community push to get the corporation yard out of Piper Park so that the entire park space could be used for park purposes. Now, uh, Park and Rec may be more park-related than the courtyard was, but it still does seem a little ironic to evict one city department only to replace it a few years later, uh, with, uh, another, uh, city, uh, structure. And since the library is going to be moving and there will be space opening up, I really do urge a more, uh, uh, intensive consideration of putting Park and Rec, uh, into that space. It just seems natural, it may not be ideal proximity-wise, but, uh, it, doing that could do, serve three objectives. Number one, save money, number two, keep park space open, and number three, uh, consolidate city office space in one place, as, as some of the community expressed at the Monday meeting. And, and then, uh, regarding money, uh, last year, Measure G, uh, committee, uh, recommended, based on staff recommendation and the council, uh, uh, allocated 500,000 dollars to renovate the, uh, hall gym. And, uh, the idea was, it was somehow, uh, disaster-related. Maybe we should reconsider that 500,000, given what we're looking at here. Uh, I don't know if using it for, uh, part, uh, the rec building would be consistent with Measure G priorities, but money is fun, fungible in part. So, uh, maybe, uh, that, uh, 500,000 could be used for something else and the something else money, uh, could be used, uh, for, to offset the, uh, Park and Rec. But, uh, pull, I mean, pulling the money from the gym wouldn't be in the spirit of retaliation, but since the, uh, uh, district took. but since the, uh, uh, district took an, an action which resulted, has resulted in a very significant unanticipated expenditure, it seems reasonable to try to backfill that expenditure in part with, uh, funds, uh, previously, uh, allocated, uh, to the district.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holmes. Any comment on that or we don't? Okay.
I'll work backwards. I want to make sure the public, it's clear to the public that the council did not allocate $500,000 of Measure G money to renovate Hall Middle School Gym. The council set aside $500,000 so that if we can work it out with the school district, we're going to do upgrades at the gym that make it a location that people can go to during a disaster or during a dirty air event when they need to find a clean airspace. The gym is a very ideal facility for that, but it needs a lot of upgrades if it were to provide that sort of service. So, that, that's important because Measure G, you made commitments to the community of how you'd spend it, and that's what you set that money aside for. Um, secondly, staffs actually talked about, I, I'm very familiar with what Mr. Holmes is saying about how there were members of the community that really wanted that trailer out of the park. And one of the things that was said was so we can have that space back to recreate. So I've been asking staff, have you ever actually seen anybody recreating on that space? And the answer is no. In fact, the only people I've ever seen recreating there are, when we have camps, they use that as an area for drop-off and checking kids into some of the summer camps. If we were to do the bigger project too, we would actually end up removing the bathroom that's currently cited and that would free up more open space, if you will. I don't know what we would actually put down there, but, um, I really feel that, uh, staff assess this and doesn't feel we'd be impairing people's enjoyment of the open elements of the park.
It's a strange little wedge kind of area there. It's not suitable for any sport ga, any games or any soccer or football or anything in that little wedge that's there. So. And that's my opinion.
Not really, I don't think it's really used a lot. Whether we cite a temporary use, another trailer, or whether we cite a building, I, I don't think we're going to impair people's enjoyment of the park.
Okay, so that closed public comment, thank you for that. And, um, it sounds like we are um, encouraging that we know a few things that are facts. We're going to lose that spot um, in the current space. Um, I think what I have heard is, um, the utilization of Piper Park and the proximity to Piper Park for the, um, not only for the staff, but for, um, uh, our residents and others who use it needs to be as close as possible to that large spot there. I think what I've also heard is we have four different options and they are kind of class at A, B, C, and D as far as the level of quality and length of time in which they would serve the public. Um, from the 50-year fixed modular building, which is our most expensive option, all the way down to some sort of small trailer type of things. Um, or these portable classrooms, which then provide less. So leaving, um, the future members of this council to probably have to make another decision if we choose a lower and mobile temporary option because its utilization will probably diminish. How does everybody else think about this?
I have some observations.
Sure.
Um, so one observation I make is that the, um, larger of the mobile classrooms, if we purchased it, would be $400,000. Um, if we wanted to bring in the electrical supply, um, that would come in with the EV charging at 450. So there you have 850. And if you wanted to restore the existing restrooms that actually have some storage space with them, that would be 1.2 million. So we could effectively, if we did this à la carte, come in at a cost of 2 million. Um, now, that's the medium grade, you know, it's not the, the Cadillac model, if you will. Um, and it is, like you said, it would mean that in 10 years' time, likely, there would need to be a decision about what to do to potentially replace it. I, for me, given all the moving parts with the library coming, becoming available, um, and there being resources or rooms there that will be made available to the public, um, the, um, you know, not knowing what becomes of City Hall and the spaces here and how they may be used by the public as well, that going with a temporary 10-year solution almost seems prudent versus a 50-year solution. Um, I thought some of the buildings, um, that were shown, the, not the one that's like a trailer, but the one that looked a little bit more permanent, actually to me was more visually appealing than the
25-year fixed modular building, this one?
No, the, they were like wooden, yes. Yeah. To me, actually, those were a little bit more visually appealing than, um, the more permanent structures, personally. Um, in fact, I found the second, uh, image of the more permanent structures, which was the lower grade than the top grade, more visually appealing than the top grade that I saw. The ones from Contra Costa or wherever they were taken from. Um, but the, that $400,000 purchase gives us the flex space, um, and the office space. It also gives us bathrooms, which could be used by the public. Um,
So wait, so, so that's this model, the 25-year fixed modular building is one you're talking about?
I'm talking about that. Yeah, those had bathrooms.
So we can pretty much, do we say this recreation department alternative option of the rent the mobile trailer?
I'm not.
Nobody's interested.
I'm, I'm not interested in that.
I'm not, but, but I mean, I want to, we can go through and all, give our thoughts.
So, and anyway, so, um, I also would like to s- suggest that I do believe that, you know, that 450,000 that we're talking about for the EV upgrade, we're likely able to get some rebates. So that actually is going to bring down our costs on that. Um, and then Julian did mention that that 1.2 is the very high end of redoing the existing bathrooms. That we probably could do the, redo the existing bathrooms for less. Frankly, I, I like the idea of the separation of the public bathrooms from the rec office too. I think that having a separate space for the public to use the bathrooms, um, not attached to the rec offices is nice. So those are some of my observations.
So those numbers pencil out to, in just using the hypothetical numbers here, I didn't write down all the numbers, but did you think, did you, did you think about them in your head when Sarah was mentioning kind of the menu list?
Um, I think we got up to, to, 2 million.
2 million, okay.
And that's, I think that's high-end, right? We could actually get the remodeling of the bathrooms less than 1.2. Um, and we will likely get some rebates for EV charging stations, which covers bringing more power. So that's just an observation I'm making. And I, I feel it's more also prudent and fiscally responsible based on all of the other projects, including the firehouses that we have, um, to spend less and to also not think of a permanent 50-year building. Um, given the way that technology is changing, um, construction materials are changing, building codes are changing, just the, the pace at which things are changing, to me, actually, a 10-year approach is, um, compelling.
Anybody want to weigh in on their thoughts?
Sure, Scott.
So, um, Councilmember Margalise, let me start by apologizing because I always seem to disagree with you.
That's okay. We're good at that.
I, uh, am normally very fiscally conservative. However, uh, when investing in infrastructure, um, I feel that when you do it right, it's an investment in your community. When you go on the low end, you're going to have to redo it anyway. And it's, it's almost like just throwing the money away. You know, we'll, we'll spend $2 million, then have to do it over again in, in five to 10 years. Or we spend $3 million and we have it for 50 years. So 3.5 million, we have 50 years, you know, so it is more expensive. But the, somebody mentioned the, the park is like a crown jewel of, of Larkspur. And I think it would be nice to really put a nice building there, you know, and make it nice for staff, make it nice for the community when they come, want to come in and talk to staff, you know, make it something that we're proud of as opposed to something that feels temporary, that it's, it's kind of like a placeholder. You know, so for that reason, I, I, I feel like it's worth the investment. Um, and I think, I don't think it's going to affect City Hall or the fire stations. I mean, we're going to have to have that conversation if we want 20 or 30 million dollars, you know, to redo one of these things. We're going to have to figure out some funding mechanism for that. I don't think the extra million, there, there were a million five that we're talking about for this is going to affect that, is, is my thoughts anyway.
So you're arguing for enhanced modular 50-year, which is the 2.2, 2,400 square foot recreation staff plus flex space includes site work, restroom replacement, and EV charging upgrade.
Yes, my, my feeling is if we are going to do this, you know, for the incremental amount that is going to cost, but the economies you get for doing everything together and the value that you get at the end of the day, you spend 3, 3.5 million, you get the, the upgrades of the electrical, you get the charging stations, and you get a really nice building, uh, you know, as opposed to spending less, but I think you end up getting much less to show for it at the end. Uh, it's that, those are my, my thoughts anyway.
What about you, Gabe?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would start, want to start by apologizing. I disagree with you. No, I, I, no, I'm, I'm in all seriousness, I, 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 I think what you're saying makes sense. I, you know, as when I asked, um, Nick, I, you know, first want to support the park. And I do think, you know, Larkspur is unique in, in the Central Valley for a few reasons. One is transportation. I mean, we have more hubs than anyone except San Rafael and the parks. Um, and, you know, I do think, you know, now with our library and this, we're really building a beautiful civic infrastructure. So there's an appeal there. I just, I, I, I think, you know, today we're not making a decision. I'd like to focus more on how we get the money. So, you know, Jeannie, what you were saying about, you know, community fundraising and, you know, that we get these rebates, if we can just research that a little bit more, that would, you know, make my, you know, sort of leap of faith into, you know, quality investment, you know, seem more, you know, responsible to the taxpayer. Uh, you know, short of that, and this is why I was saying I disagree with you, you know, a lot of it was me thinking, you know, how can I bootstrap it? Almost like Nick was saying, I used to work in, you know, in, in a closet, you know, when the janitor was in there type. I mean, I think that you're saying it's, you know, really the, the value of this would be for the public, like for the kids, you know, the room and what Jeannie's saying, I mean, not to be stitching together electrical when you're doing musical events. And I don't know so much about the ice skating thing. That went out a long time ago with bowling alleys, but I, I love the idea. Um, so, so, you know, i- the thought is not that we do it on the cheap, but really, when you look at, um, 1,400 square feet at, you know, i- buying time, when you say redo it, it's almost like build something with foundation and then tear it down. But if you roll it in with wheels and you buy yourself five years, that, that could be a good option too, especially if the kids don't really care and, and they get that space. We do have a lot of surplus office space potentially. So, so I, I'm on the fence. You know, I, I think if we can feel more comfortable about, about the financing, I'm inclined to do it right. You know, if not, you know, let's also see what, you know, the frugality, frugonomics of it might look like.
So, um, having been involved with fundraising for the library, um, not necessarily, I, I mean, I haven't been because we're not allowed to do that, but, um, knowing the process of how long that's taken, it's a long process to fundraise for a public-private partnership. Um, we had a committed team who did it for the library, but we're the first, that's the first building in all of Larkspur that I know of and that had that public-private partnership. And I think it really succeeded because of that one-time grant that we got during COVID from the state of California, which was, hadn't happened in 40 years. I love the idea of public-private partnerships, but it is a long, drawn-out process to set that framework together, to get your team built, to get your messaging out there. At the same time, we're still in the process of, of, well, the commons and the other groups are still in the process of fundraising, um, for a long-term endowment process for the new library. And so dipping in to requests to the community for various things, I think realistically is not going to work. It might. There is some conversation that there could be, um, public-private partnership to redo this building, but that's going to take years of strategy for how you reach out to community about that. I mean, Jean's been doing it for years for lots of groups. Think the reason why the commons was successful was not only this core group, but because the momentum with the matching grant showed that we were actually going to get this project done. So I don't want to turn down money if anybody wants to donate, but capital campaigns are a long process. They, they really are. I've done them for other schools. I've done them. It, it would not, we're in a time constraint with the district removing our option there. A capital campaign is a five-year window, probably minimum. So that's just my thoughts about that. But I, I think they can be successful. The commons is a, a prime example. But that had some unique characteristics and funding that brought it up to a, a sense that it was going to be a success. And so you had people contribute with that, but. All right, we haven't heard from you, Missy. What do you think? My mom used to call me Missy, that's what it says.
Um, yeah, I would say that when I first read the staff report and thought about, you know, the, um, the needs that we have there, I think, um, a few things. I, I, I do think that, you know, what Nick said about, um, having community space, I think was really important and something that I really wanted to focus on. I was less focused on the staff offices. And so I guess in terms of design, if we can make it so that the community space is more the focus and, and, um, the office space is, is not as much of a focus. Um, I don't know if that changes the cost at all as, you know, in any way. Um, I will say about the bathroom question, um, I have seen some line, usually I, usually there is no line. Although there have been times where I've been at events at Piper and there is a line at that bathroom. And so I think to the extent that we're trying to, um, if, if we want to hold larger events there, I'd probably put in, you know, maybe three to four bathrooms, um, for public use. If, if the goal is to eventually have larger events at Piper. Um, and, and I'm there like almost every day. Um, and candidly speaking, I am also very fiscally conservative and, um, I, you know, all things being equal, if this, if this project, if this project were $2 million, I, I, I feel very comfortable um, uh, approving it. Um, so I'm hoping that maybe we might be able to find a way. So, and also I think that the most expensive option also is, um, it's very nice and, um, very fancy, but also remember that, you know, this is a park and so it doesn't have to look like a shiny office building. And that's kind of what the real expensive option, you know, felt like, was like it was a very shiny office building. Um, so I, I, I was hoping that maybe we could find a way to maybe work down some of the costs. Um, and MCE definitely does have EV charging, um, rebates. Although, you know, in the grander scheme of things, I think it's going to be, it, it's going to be what, $40,000 for six EV chargers? It's not, it's not going to be huge. Um, and, you know, I, I think the issue for me though is, I, I also I hear, um, you know, the, the comments about the, the temporary space. And I, I think the issue, you know, Sarah, I do like your number, the two, two, two and a half million number. I think, y- you know, spending the 1.2 million on the bathrooms rather than the community space, I feel like for me, that was sort of, you know, I, for me, the priority was the community room. And so to spend more money on the bathroom than the actual rooms where our staff would be working and where people would actually be spending time, you know, I, I, I want to put the money towards where, you know, our commu, where we would get the best use. And I just didn't feel like the bathrooms were, you know, the, kind of the best use for that. And if there's a way to do this so that we get a nice community room and office and the bathrooms could be less fancy or something, less, yeah, like the bathrooms don't need to be super fancy, I don't think. Um, that's kind of where what I would, you know, that's kind of where.
Her argument was that we rebuild the existing spot where those are. And then this idea is they're incorporated into the And then this idea is they're incorporated into the main community area. This example.
Right. But I was just saying, but if we rebuild in the same existing spot, that was going to cost one point two million, right?
And yes, and but I did hear very clearly that that was the very high end. Catherine spoke about some that you can just plop into place, right? So I think we could probably build bathrooms for less than one point or rebuild the existing structure for less than one point two million.
Right.
And whether or not we put replace the fourth bathroom and take away the storage space that's currently there, you know, that's something we can consider to your point. If we are looking to hold bigger events, maybe reintroducing or, you know, reclaiming that fourth bathroom makes sense.
Well, but I I think I need to 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 say that I don't know how much a bathroom costs. I don't know how much a bathroom costs because that's not my expertise. I don't know how much a bathroom costs because I've never built one. But that's why Kitchell, who we've hired to do these plans and give the estimates, who's the expert in construction management, who's worked for the city, building our new library, building all sorts of things, is giving these estimates. And they have the experience to tell us what they cost, to give us a a framework of the top end and the bottom end. And I can hypothetically say, I bet you I can get a bathroom for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, but I'm just pulling that out of the air because I really don't know. That's why we use people like Kitchell, who are project management companies, who are well respected and well known to vet these things and give us the the numbers. And I have to trust those numbers.
Okay, forgive me for saying, but I didn't realize that those numbers in that table come from Kitchell.
They the Kitchell is the did the the outline and the report, and they're the ones who usually give us our initial cost estimate. Am I correct?
So staff has been working with Kitchell on putting this analysis together, the feasibility numbers you look at. And then these numbers encompass a lot of items in these projects or site work, the utility work.
There's labor.
And those are all generated from their database based on recent projects. The actual building number, when I showed some of the slides, they and myself actually reached out to a number of the manufacturers that do these, both the modular buildings and the mobiles. And we have through today costs for what those would be. So that one point two number from the restroom comes from what we got from a manufacturer for a restroom that's similar to the modular units you saw for the rec offices. So as I've shown you with the rec offices, there's other lower cost options for doing that. But in the same kind of construction technique and standard that I drove for those modular buildings, that one point two number comes from actual estimates from from vendors.
I guess that's my my point is, is that these were, these are estimates that are based on current data sources and current construction costs from companies like Kitchell, who has been doing this kind of work all over. And I mean, I feel like we are getting accurate numbers. We can make a decision, but I don't feel confident that I can hypothetically say I can find a less expensive bathroom because I don't have that experience with this. So.
No, yeah, that would be my direction, though, to staff is similar to what council member Andre has said is coming in closer to a two million dollar number.
Okay, further. So our job tonight was not only to hear this, but to staff recommendation was to return with a budget, suggest that they return with a budget amendment for one of the options or to return with additional information on one multiple or others.
So if I may, it it sounds like we don't have consensus at this point. What I'm hearing is go back to staff and say, come on, can you do it for less, you know, or, you know, give us some other options of how we can get something we like for two million, which I am okay with, but I think they've already kind of done the homework and these are kind of our realistic choices. I mean, from my perspective, I think if we go on the, if we try to save money, we're probably going to regret it. I think it's going to look temporary and and we're not going to feel good about it. But again, that's that's my personal opinion. I'm I'm happy if we want to give it back to staff with some direction. I just, I'm not sure the proper direction is, you know, redo this and come up with numbers we're going to like better. You know, I mean, ma- maybe it's, hey, can you give us four options of potential restrooms? You know, or something like that, if we're just going to do the restroom alone and, you know, from low end to high end, kind of like you you did with the buildings, if that's even, I, again, I'm I'm.
Yeah, I hear you.
I want to make sure we give their give staff direction that's actually going to move us forward.
Plus, I mean, this is the gateway into, this building would be the gateway into a large public use park. And the police station has been upgraded. That wasn't there when the trailers where the public works was. There's a new building there. The the upgrades to our dog, our canine commons and to the pickleball court and all the upgrades we did to the to the picnic area over the years. This would be the entry point building that everybody would see. And I'm to your point, I think we need to build something for fifty years that will be flexible and utilized and not just kind of thrown together as a temporary building. I don't know. Because this really is the main public use area that we have. We have no other, I mean, there's little parks, but this one is the place where the community goes for all sorts of activities across the spectrum, from the walkers to the dogs, to the bird watchers, to the kids having picnics in the park, to the schools. This is it. This is our main park. We don't have ten other ones of this size, and I think the investment in it is necessary. That's where I come back for.
Okay, so having said that, I think.
Have I convinced anybody?
We can, we can, we can take a vote and see where we are. But, you know, I'm not sure we have consensus, so I'm not sure how you would like to proceed, Madam Mayor.
Well, we were not asked to have a vote necessarily on a particular resolution or ordinance, but to ask for a return to have one brought back to us. I am confident in putting forward that the option that is the one that the Public Works Director gave us as the modular permanent options in the enhanced manner would serve the better part of the community for the longest amount of time and give us honestly, the more bang for the buck. It's more expensive, but it won't need to be remodeled like in the next five years. It'll be there in a more permanent fixture. And I also think it shows a classier looking spot. It shows an investment in a very important part of what the community wants, which is the enhancement spaces of our library, community center and our park. And right across the street or down the street a little bit, we're going to have a brand new building that we designed to the next fifty years. We've designed this new library to serve the community for the next fifty years. I think the one across the street is equally important to serve. So that's my opinion.
Let let me ask a question, I guess, to staff. Some council members seem to be leaning towards, let's send it back to staff. And I know, Gabe, you were saying you'd feel more comfortable if we had a better idea of what kind of rebates are out there. If we had a better idea of some of the unknowns. Does staff feel that if we punted it back to you and you came back in a month, that you would be able to present us with more information than you have today?
Where would the rebates go? I would say probably not. We've got to work through a process with PGE and go through their application. We actually have to have it designed and they have to run it and before they can give us the numbers back. So my sense would be if we're looking for what the component of the upgraded electrical and EV rebate would be, we're probably six months out from knowing what that number would be if I started today. Like, we wouldn't know until we got through the.
At that point, do we know if the school district is doing any enhancement to their EV? Because you 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 recited that that a lot of the teachers use those park EVs during the school day. Is there options at the school district? Will it make an investment into their EV for their staff or do we know? I don't know.
Again, the the EV rebate part of it for the actual charger is not a big chunk of money. The actual cost of the chargers themselves is just over a hundred thousand dollars. So let's say you get half of that back, that's fifty thousand. The biggest unknown and the biggest rebate potential is the PGE Rule twenty nine project that will pay to bring the upsize power all the way to where the chargers are or where the building. That's about a three hundred thousand dollar number. And until we go through the program and fill out an application and they go through the PGE process, I can't say what that or that rebate would be.
But that's more than just the cars. It's also upgrading, as the description was, how bad the power is in certain areas for, you know, for music in the park and et cetera. That would upgrade for that too. Yeah.
Can I ask council members, Gabe and Sarah, what more information are you looking for? You know, I think you both mentioned that you'd like some some different numbers. What are you looking for? And is it something that staff can provide? You know, because I I don't fully understand what more information you're you're trying to get.
Sure. I I would be interested in understanding what are the different options. I believe what I'm hearing is that with regards to the bathroom quote that we have for one point two five million dollars, that comes from the same vendor who's responsible for these nicer, more, these permanent. I'm not going to call them nicer because I don't necessarily believe they're nicer, but these permanent building structures. And so I'd like to understand what are some other options and costs associated with remodeling the existing bathroom that is there today. I just also want to bring up a point about, you know, this is the entrance point to our park and this park is well used and people really enjoy the park. To me, the park is there for the recreational use. And it's not, it doesn't, it crosses my mind that the tennis courts are probably in need of repair. There are a lot of people who would like to see pickleball at this park. And those are costs that could be considered with the other million. I I just don't think it's prudent from my perspective to spend three and a half, three or three and a half million dollars on a building to, yes, it will have a room that's used by the public. And and the the option that I was going with did provide that service to the public. And it also provides office space for our two full time employees today. So to me, it seemed like a reasonable approach. And I I don't, I didn't think it was looked terrible or, you know, I don't want to present an option that looks really shabby and doesn't present for Larkspur well. I mean, I I have a lot of love and, you know, I'm proud of where I live. And so it seemed like a reasonable middle of the road option. And I think it it actually looks rather nice. So. But I also think twenty four hundred square feet is very large. This room here is a thousand square feet approximately. It's more two and a half times the size of this room. And that, to me, seems like a very big building to build for what is ostensibly two offices, a reception area. Well, then it's got, you know, an indoor bathroom, a janitor space. And then also there were the, what are we calling this room? The community room, sorry, which also, you know, we all have other community rooms that are going to be available inside of our library. And then I don't know what the future of this building holds, but I foresee community uses of this building as well.
Yeah. And then I guess my my answer, Scott, is I, you know, I think some of this has been clarified by the back and forth. But I'm leaning on that side. You know, one thing, Mayor Way, I think is the one thing to keep separate is the fact that we're under time pressure, we're under the gun. And you're also saying, and let's build a legacy. And I think those two should be separated. So this, what we're talking about is not going to be the Mill Valley Community Center. I mean, that's civic pride. That's, you know, that one reason I go to Mill Valley. It's such a beautiful thing. This is basically office and a place for kids to do some plays and whatnot. So three and a half million seems overpriced. That that's that's the thought. And then the the reason, I again disagree, if you cart something in on wheels, that's, you know, fourteen hundred square feet and you carted it out. I think because so many things are in motion, we need more time. You know, I think the library and how that space will use and how that might be extended. You know, I basically, you know, ditto to some of the things, what what will happen to this space? You know, there's a lot of things in transition for our office space in particular and our civic infrastructure. I I'd rather, and and I, you know, given that we're not building something that's going to be such a focal point like the library or the Mill Valley Community Center, I'd rather put something up that meets the minimum viable thing that that, you know, Nick had said, you know, where the kids and the public can come. And then I don't think we're, you know, kicking it down the road for another council. I think there will be a whole nother set of information for a big decision like that. And three and a half million, I mean, we were struggling, you know, in debates about, you know, should we, you know, save a hundred thousand here? That, I mean, I I think we're forgetting how much money that is because it seems like this is going to, you know, put a wreath, you know, on our on our city hall.
So I I guess my question is, I know three and a half million is a big number, but we're not talking about three hundred, three point five million or zero. We're talking about three point five million or two million. And the question is, for that extra one point five million, is it worth it to get something that's going to last for fifty years? Is it worth it to get something that, you know, is going to, something we're going to feel better about? And and the answer may be no. You you may say, you know what? We just want something for five years. And if it costs two million dollars to do something for five years, we'll cross that bridge in five years. And I I understand that and I get that.
But the the two million, so sorry, I'd I'd have to go back. What the building you were looking at was which option, Sarah? You were talking about rent mobile classroom, fourteen hundred square feet. That's the, this one right here. That's.
That number two option here.
Sixty five thousand.
Or purchasing it for four hundred grand. You can purchase it for four hundred.
But then you're also, I I mean, I'm less inclined to to do the bathrooms.
So.
That option, though, is fourteen hundred square foot to house recreation staff plus flex place. No restroom upgrade, no EV charger upgrade.
That's correct.
Okay.
So let me ask, are the bathrooms in need of upgrade at this point? I mean, if we decided we just wanted to put, you know, the the option that that Gabe is talking about, can we just do nothing to the bathrooms and call it a day?
I mean, for a period of time, they're in a state of disrepair. Right now, there's a lot of dry rod and we're doing a lot of little fixes here and there. But within the next two or three years, those bathrooms probably believe they need to be closed or completely renovated or or replaced. Like, they're they're hanging on now, basically.
So I mean, it 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 sounds like we, again, if you, if we don't want to upgrade the power, you know, and we're okay with the power going off when bands play and lights going out and stuff like that. Yeah, we can get by with a little bit. But the, it sounds like we have two million dollars worth of infrastructure needs at at a minimum. Right. And the question is, is it worth it to spend the extra one point five to do something permanent and something what?
Yeah.
One could see as nicer or not.
Yeah, it's a great question. And I mean, the other thought is, is, you know, and maybe Julian, you can help is, you know, okay, we could get a loan. You know, that that would, you know, change our cash flow. But if we phase it this way, you know, the 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 most pressing thing is we're going to have to give up this space to Luxford Corner Madera Schools. So that's where the, you know, the option of, you know, fifty thousand a year is appealing to me because you take that pressure off. And and do we really use the lose these economies? You know, in in two years, they may or may not be the same. So I'm just saying, I don't think the pressure of making the decision is here if we go that way. And and I think because of all the things in motion, we may have a much better decision. You know, this is not procrastination. I think it's really waiting for more information that staff can't bring to us now. That's that's, you know, one hesitation. But I also, I mean, I I said in the beginning, you know, I I I feel like I want to support the park. And actually, Jeannie, some of the arguments you said, you know, how we can scale this with power. I mean, these are all very legitimate things, but I I feel right now the constraint of, you know, the fact that, you know, CMPA and their salaries. I mean, there are just so many things where I'm especially fiscally conscious now, so that that's, you know, holding me back.
So so what I'm hearing, and sorry, i- is that for a, let's say, fifty thousand dollars, you know, if we're going to just rent it, you know, and not buy it or or, you know, whatever, whatever it happens to be, we we're paying that money now to wait for more information that it's worth it to pay. You know, let's say we're going to do a hundred thousand dollars over two years to have something temporary that we rent. And then we say in two years, we'll have more information because we'll know more about the library, we'll know more about this building. And at that point, we can make an intelligent decision. And if we lose two hundred thousand dollars or whatever it is that we've invested, that's the price you pay for having more complete information.
Yeah.
Am I hearing that correctly?
I think so. And Julian, I think the the economy of scale is if we actually get, you know, heavy equipment here, you know, to tear up and put in the power line and to do the bathroom. if we actually get, you know, heavy equipment here, you know, to tear up and put in the power line and to do the bathroom and to build this, it would not make sense to do those three separately. Now, that might raise the cost twenty to fifty percent is, you know, my guesstimate. So, you know, you're short of us doing a temporary trailer. We really should do these things together.
Yeah. So if you're going to do the permanent modular building, which will need an electrical upgrade, then digging the trench and bringing the P G E in from Doherty at the same time you're doing the E V is, it probably adds twenty percent to the cost on just doing the E V, whereas it would be double if not more if you did them separately.
Okay.
The other caveat to that is P G D are particular about setting up their infrastructure for future needs. So if we did just want to do the temporary building, but bring the P G E power in for the upgrade and for the E V charger, they probably wouldn't size that P G E infrastructure for a future twenty four hundred square foot building. So there could be another cost of P G E in on that also. And then the other economies of scale is the bathroom that I put at one point two million. Then I said you could probably build a lesser quality structure for about, you know, half a million, probably six hundred thousand. The most economical way to build those restrooms is to put them in another building that you're already building. It's probably about four hundred thousand dollars worth of the cost in that three point five million is the bathroom. The most economical way to get those bathrooms rebuilt is to incorporate them in another building because you're not paying for four sides of exterior work. You're not paying for new slats. You're not paying for new water and sewer, all that stuff. So that's kind of why we lump those things all into the permanent project is there's some real, and it's not just because the equipment's out there. It's, there's a lot of cost savings in pulling those two other items in with the building.
Sorry, you just said you're not paying for new water and sewer, but in fact, you are paying for new water and sewer if you're building a new building. The water and sewer already exists in the, in the facility that we have where the toilets are. So you don't have to replace that water and sewer.
Lost my trail of where I was where I said that. But yeah, I can't remember the context of what I said.
So in other words, what Sarah's saying is it's not like plopping one in a bathroom down in a brand new spot in the park. It would be rebuilt in the existing space that's already there so that the water and sewer lines and everything already exists there.
Yeah. So you don't have to redo the water and the sewer because you're already bringing them in for the new building. But you're right, there's water and sewer at the existing building. If you were going to rebuild something in the same place, yeah, that's true.
Okay.
But the economies of scale that as described in this conceptual drawing with having the two exterior bathrooms accessible, one interior bathroom accessible is a less expensive option because it's easier to build them as an inclusive whole.
Yeah, because you're fitting them into the footprint of an existing building. You're just making that building a little bit bigger. You're not, if you do it as a separate building, then you're putting the skin and all the exterior fixtures and windows and everything all around the building. Whereas it's just more economical if you just grow a footprint that you're already working on.
So the price tag to do this separately, if we did, you know, power and then we did bathrooms and rebuilding would be, I forget the number you said, was it fifty percent? I mean, it'd be like a five million dollar price tag or something like that. Or I'm just wondering how much we're saving if we do them all together.
The bathroom, if we did a standalone bathroom to the same quality as the modular, the cost estimate was one point two. And then the power was about half a million. So one point two, you're asking if we did the three point five and then we did the bathroom separately?
Yeah. So these two costs here is one point six five.
Yeah.
One point six five to do those two things separately.
Okay. So it's like five point one if you did them all.
Just the upgrade. If you did them all separately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what I've heard from Nick, and I understand your concern that, you know, we don't have full information right now, and I get that. But the impression I got from Nick is that it is very unlikely that we're going to put ourselves in a situation where we've got, we've got too much community space. You know, we built something too nice and now we've got nothing to do with it. I don't think that's going to happen. I don't, I think if we build something nice here, we're going to use it. And, you know, even if there, even if it turns out that there's space here or there's space, the library or whatever, it doesn't sound like, you know, that's a concern, you know, of building this. So while I agree that we don't have full information and we would probably make a better decision, you know, in two years. I feel comfortable that we have enough information to know that this investment will be beneficial to our community. That's my gut. Sorry if I'm repeating myself.
No, you're, I mean, that's, that's what we're here for, is to debate some of these most important issues.
Stephanie, you're awfully quiet. What's going on?
She's getting tired. It's getting to be quarter of depth. So kind of hearing mixed. I don't know if there's too much more information other than what's been provided here. I think this really falls down to not only an economic decision, but a long term policy decision of what we're spending money for now for the generation ahead, frankly. I won't be here in fifty years. So yeah, we're really investing. I think the last fifteen years in Larkspur has been a lot of infrastructure investment in our roads and our sewer system and our three bridges we had to redo, the Bon Air being the biggest, obviously. K nine Commons, the parks, the new library and community center. This feels like this is kind of the last big piece of investment, I mean, in infrastructure.
I would say last.
And store brains. We haven't scratched.
Okay, you're right. But there are separate little, there's a separate pot for the fire stations because it's, we are in an agency, a fire agency with another city. That conversation about how that happens is going to be a more complex one because we're going to have to deal with a lot of regulatory things about fire stations, et cetera. I'm comfortable going with the recommendation which Julian has put forward here of the enhanced modular with the E V chargers and the bathroom enhancements and the design here. But and it sounds like Scott is too. But if we need additional information to feel comfortable with that.
Or if the three of you want something else, that's okay. We can get outvoted, you know, or if we want to.
Stephanie, I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, I mean, look, this is a tough one. I mean, you know, I, we have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of needs and our buildings are old and aging. And so this is, you know, this is one of them. I mean, I guess, you know, this is, I guess, a space need because, you know, all those schools taking back their, their space. Look, like I said, I mean, I would be in favor of trying to figure out a way to get a permanent structure for less. I mean, Julian, what, so it's structured, it's cited where it is. Would it be cheaper if you cited it where the existing bathrooms are?
We did actually look at that. It's roughly the same. It may be a little bit more because there's asphalt pathways around that bathroom that would have to be reconfigured or moved so that people could get around the community space. So there may be a little more site work if we put it where the existing bathrooms are. I mean, to bring those costs down, you're looking at doing it one of two ways. One is like giving you a range of three to three and a half million for a twenty four hundred square foot building. That's based on permanent modular construction. There's a, there's a tier below that that is slightly better than the mobile, but it really will, it'll, it'll look like a, it'll look like a mobile classroom, but it's actually on a foundation. It's a less expensive way to get a permanent building. It just won't be the same fit and finish and it won't feel like a new construction building when you're in. But it'll be on a, on a foundation and will be more of a permanent structure. The only other way to do it is to reduce the square footage. And so the square footage, the twenty four hundred is based on the modules. And unfortunately, to go the next step down puts you at nineteen sixty or so, which is pretty much what they have now. So if you try to squeeze the public bathrooms into that space, then your flex space, your community space goes down. Or you lose no flexibility for staff space in there. You basically get the two offices and then you don't get the workflow space and you don't get as big a public counter. So those are certainly to get a permanent building and to get the costs go down, those are your two variables. You go with a lower quality build or you have to cut the square footage.
So with regard to the lower quality build, is that the second image that you showed us? There were two images that you showed us with the modular construction.
Yeah, the second one that was very boxy looking was three million.
Okay.
There's a version below that.
Okay.
Like a mobile classroom, but it planted on a permanent foundation. So you have a permanent structure. It's just, it's just going to look like a, like a portable classroom.
And I, I guess, Dan, you know, on the, you might be asking you to repeat yourself, but the three and a half million, how would that look again? So we have reserves, we have, you know, the operation, you know what? I probably didn't follow that closely enough because now I, you know, I'm also beginning to feel like, you know, there, there isn't necessarily that much more that time is going to tell, especially with the economies of doing them all together. I mean, I can see, you know, Julian, you thought this one through.
So for a project like this, we always start by saying the, the place to point to, to guarantee the project is the reserve, right? So that's why we showed you the general fund reserve because we say at least we know we have this much, so we could, we could commission this project. Once the council sort of indicates to us that's where we're headed, we start to look for other pots of money. So we're not pulling from the reserve. So Julian's already indicated there might be some monies available from rebates that eventually would defray some of this cost. We can't bank on future development, but we're all kind of watching in anticipation that Larkspur Landing Circle will develop Ross Valley Sanitary District. That site will, in my, in all likelihood, the developer will pay parking lieu fees rather than develop a park. It makes a lot of sense. And I think the city would generally support that, given the layout in Larkspur Landing. The way that kind of fee comes in, it can be spent on park services that serve the entirety of the city. And I think you could justify eventually, you know, that kind of money being used to reimburse the general fund for fronting cash. You know, there's all these sorts of pots of money and I, and if I, as part of a budget amendment, I bring you sort of the speculations and the real opportunities that are out there. But for the discussion tonight, what we wanted to do is say you do have some cash, so you can make this happen.
So next step, I mean, I guess the downside is, you know, if we do this and, you know, say the Ross Valley sanitary property doesn't go through, we've just chopped our reserve in half.
No, not in half.
You, you took the unallocated monies, not, not the whole reserve, right?
Because the reserve is twenty five million.
Right. Because remember, just the twenty five percent alone that we set aside for, to protect this on the general fund on operating is six point five.
Okay, sorry about, yeah, okay. So the unallocated part gets cut in half. And, and I mean, I guess would it make sense to come back with the probabilities? Or, I mean, is it more like we could agree tonight that we do want to go this way? And we haven't made a commitment yet, you know, we want to ensure that there is some way to, you know, replenish that reserve or to, you know, find other pots of money. Is that, and then the next step would be, I'm not sure how we proceed.
I think that's a lot of hypotheticals, though, because, I mean, we can anticipate development. I'm sorry, you go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean interrupt.
No, that's right. You're more skilled at this than I am on budgets.
I would actually, you think of this a lot of respects, the way we approached the library where there came a day where we had to say, the city is committed to this project. We have a funding partner that might show up with more money. And luckily they did, right? But we, at some point, the council said, make this project happen. The state grant has materialized. We will use the general fund reserve to guarantee the match that the state's requiring. And then we're going to hope that our funding partner makes our vision more palpable financially. I think that's kind of the same thought process here. Are you willing to guarantee the project so we can move forward? And then we'll do our best to come up with other options. I would love to say I had all those options for you right now. But a lot of times what happens with a project of this nature is we have to start really studying, scraping. I mean, one of the questions that the vice mayor asked was would some of our other regional partners be willing to contribute to this? I've been sort of ruminating on that during the meeting. Maybe they would if they got a commitment that they got to use the building for some particular reason. That's the call, right? That's the call I might make to the county is do you have any of your departments that have a need to be operating in and around Pipe Park? Would this facility be a match for that? What would be the impact of rec if we did that partnership, but maybe there's money to come to the table? You know, again, it's all speculation. So we go back to, are we prepared to guarantee the project to move forward? And then we'll see what we can materialize.
So is it fair that we have the wiggle room that we're, we can guarantee the project? But if none of that materializes, we can go to a cheaper option.
I mean, the answer, the answer is yes, until we sign a contract.
Right.
Right? Yes, until we actually award a contract.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, just so we know, what is normally the timeframe between when we make a decision and we award a contract?
That's a little bit more for Julian. This is a unique situation because of the modular construction. It has a timetable different than a lot of projects we do.
Yeah. In this context, I'd need to see what the specific contractual agreement would be with whoever the manufacturer would be. There's some work that needs to take place in advance of that. We would have to work on the design and again, figure out the exact layout of the bathrooms and everything that made sense. And then we would have to put a document together. We'd have to go out to bid to get the manufacturers to bid on it. So you're probably looking at three to four months until you had something in hand and you can say, go, no go.
It's been my experience that you seem to find the money pots in various places for us to finish projects. So at least that's been my experience. So do we have any further consensus? Should we take a vote? Where we stand, if we feel, I don't know how much more information we can actually get. I don't have any thought that Julian's going to be able to bring back to us and an estimate that's significantly different than what we have here.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, my position sort of moved to, okay, so say we go, you know, similar to what you and Scott are saying, we do it, you know, let's just do it right. You know, the contingency for me, and I'm wondering if, you know, that's the consensus, do we have a contingency where, yes, you know, there are so, so many uncertainties. So we want to sound really committed about doing three point five without really knowing, you know, if that money's going to be, you know, pulled right out. And, and, you know, is that, you know, can we move forward saying we want to do it, but if it turns out that there's no other money there, that we just don't sign the contract for the most expensive option and we go to the next year?
I don't think it works that way, though, does it, Julian?
Is that, is that something where we are going to waste? You know, let's say you spend three months pursuing an option and then you come with a contract and we say, yeah, now we're going to do something else. Is everything that's been done those three months now wasted? And what's the amount of money that we've wasted at that point?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on how much of that work product to that date you're able to reuse and whatever you land on doing. So there will have been some analysis through of the infrastructure. We will have had conversations with P G E. So even if we decided to put a temporary building out there, we would have already put in some of the legwork towards that process. The actual layout and the design of the specific twenty four hundred square foot The actual layout and the design of the specific 2400 square foot building is a sunk cost unless you ever come back and pull it off the shelf. Again, but there would have been some components of that where we, um, discussed the space planning and how many offices we needed. And then we would just take that 2400 square foot decision and, you know, stick it into the 1400 square foot temporary model if we wanted. So it wouldn't all be a throwaway. Um.
It's not the best, it's not ideal though.
Yeah, I mean, it would, you, you would lose, the other thing you would lose is time.
The time.
Yeah, you would have to step back in some of the processes and start working on another R F P and another proposal. So, you know, you're probably losing a hundred thousand in two or three months.
Or if the tariffs keep going like crazy, we might be losing a lot of money because the tariffs, um, on steel and.
Cost escalation, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Well, okay. So look, I mean, I'm, I've sat here and thought about all this. So, um, my preference would be the three million, can, will either of you consider the three million dollar, um, modular option?
So I, I, I think, again, my, my thought when we do this stuff, like we're, we're talking about the library.
Right.
You know, and we're like, you know, for an extra couple hundred thousand dollars, you can get really nice, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And so far we've been, yeah, let's do that. Let's make this really nice.
Right.
You know, if we're dropping, I, and again, I can't tell from a picture
Right.
the real difference between the three million and the, the, other, other than the, 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 well, I mean, I could tell visually, but, but uh, one of them is going to last twice as long. You know, and it's going to look nicer.
For $500,000.
Right. How much nicer? I don't know. I mean, it looks a lot nicer in the picture, but that's just my opinion. You know, but if I'm, if we, as Julian, somebody who's, who knows more about this stuff, is the, eh, the, the 50-year modular really that much nicer than the 25? Is it built better? What, for that extra half million dollars, what are we getting?
Yeah. So you're getting a complete steel structure, the walls, um, the roof, the ceiling, everything is, is made out of steel, which is similar to what we're doing with the library. We made an upgrade to get a, a steel building. Most modulars are not steel, they're wood framed. Um, as far as looks, that's kind of subjective. Um, you just have more options with the three point five versus the three point O. You're just able to customize that skin on the building and the roof lines and the window placement so that it won't look so much like a modular.
Like this commercial space that this one looks like. Yeah.
Somebody in the construction industry, if they drive by, they're going to say that's modular. If they drive by the three point five, they might not be able to tell. Um, and then the durability. So, you know, the, the 50 and the 25 years are, are guidelines, you know, anything can happen in a building. But, but typically you want to anticipate, you're going to have higher level finishes, you're going to have, um, more durable fixtures. Um, everything's going to be to a higher level that's, you know, typically what we'd do in a civic building, that's going to have civic uses, you're going to have the public in and different people using every day. You're going to want to have it finished to a, a higher, more durable level. So.
And maintenance is probably less.
Cost savings over the life, I would say you probably realize with spending the three point five now versus three. Um, but then a component of it too is the exterior skin and being a little bit more flexible and, and what we can have the building look like.
Was that convincing to anyone?
That's it.
Yeah, no, it is. I, 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 I think if, if, so if we're going the route of non-temporary, I'm leaning towards, you know.
The enhanced modular.
Yeah, because then it really is legacy. You know, 50 years is 50 years. And, and I, I know that's not a hard number, but, um, I think, you know, if we go in that far, so you're saying the three versus three and a half?
Yeah, well, I've looked, the thing I really care about is I do think that the, the electrical is bad. And so that definitely needs upgrading. Um, I also think the bathrooms could use, you know, or rebuild. And so if what we're looking at is, you know, three or three and a half, um, you know, I don't know, part of me really wants to just save the 500,000. Um, but you know. But you get a lot more, you get a lot more utilization and use of, um, a myriad of uses for that additional amount though. I don't know. I just feel like the, I'm not convinced of the construction. Anyways, look, I don't know. I'm not convinced that the aesthetics of it are worth 500,000. Um, and, you know, look, a lot of our homes are built, you know, with wood construction and they've lasted, you know, hundreds of years. So I, you know, wood construction is not necessarily a bad thing. Um, yeah, and, and, and so, you know, the steel, I, I, I just feel like the steel might be just taking it a little bit too far, but. So you're looking at this one? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, also what about reducing the size to nineteen sixty?
Yeah, I mean, this is part of, this is kind of what I was getting at was that in this drawing here, I mean, if I look at this, it's like 60% of this is staff office space bathrooms. And so if you want to, I don't know, if we increase the community space and then some, I, I, you know, anyways, look, I don't know if that changes the cost, um, at all. If we could shrink the, you know, square footage by a little bit, but.
Yeah. So like if we were to remove the open office in the reception area and bring it in, take away one of the modules and bring it down to 1,960 feet and maybe reconfigure uh, something. I'm not sure, like, I don't know what that front storage space is.
So the front storage space is mostly for that community space if we're going to have different uses where we might have tables in the bar, then you have a use where you want the floor to be clear of everything, the storage there. So you can put those tables and chairs away so they don't interfere with what you're doing in that space.
Yeah, or play, play backdrops or musical instruments or whatever.
Okay. Well, it just seems there's a lot of open office space that to me is, you know, not necessarily space that's needed. So do we know what it would cost if we brought it down to nineteen sixty square feet as opposed to 2400? You said that was another way to reduce the cost.
You know, look, the costs are based on the Kitchell numbers, but I think Dan wants to.
I was going to suggest, I see the energy levels starting to drop.
Yes, it is.
If that's where we are, when we bring the budget amendment, we could bring you two programming models at these two scales and you could finish your discussion with the budget amendment in front of you, but you'd be able to see after maybe Julian and Kitchell's team and Nick have a discussion about what this really would mean for programming between these two sizes that you're talking about. I think we could do that and have a constructive budget amendment conversation.
So what you're proposing is to return with the nineteen sixty size as opposed to the twenty four.
I think the, the proposal.
I think we would, I think we'd bring you both.
Yeah.
And we'd bring up, up item where you could do a budget amendment to either of those sides.
Either of those.
But then we could, I think we need a little time to talk to Nick, because you're starting to play with this programming.
Yeah.
I think we'd want to come and give you better information. So we're not speculating on what the ramifications are, but I hear what you're saying. What does it really look like if we tried to scale the building down in size? So I, I think we could do that in pretty short order.
Yeah, I mean, I know what that cost is. We just have another more plan for what that is. So I don't know what that looks like as far as how much, where that space would get taken, taken out of, um, you know, and then there's also, we still get to a place where we really can't decide. I haven't really talked through with Kitchell yet in this process of how we do it, but you recall for the library, we did it with an add alternate because we didn't know if we were going to add the space.
Right.
So there may be a way that we can do this and go out and see what comes back and, you know, whether we've got the money to do the extra module or not, but I need to talk that process over because I haven't done that before with the modular construction, that's appropriate. But there may, there may be a way to have a fallback design for the three point five. And then if it really comes in, um, too high, we have an option to cut a module off, but.
I'm not hearing any interest in the mobile temporary options, the first two on your list. The mobile trailer rental and the mobile classroom rental. I don't think I'm hearing consensus on those, so we could probably put those aside. We're really down to the modular permanent options with some tweaking and maybe the size.
Yeah.
From the 2400 square feet to, um, taking out one of them to the nineteen sixty size square feet. So does that sound like where, where we've landed at this point?
Yeah, and I think it strikes a balance. I mean, I, I think the unknowns of, you know, where the money comes from and some of the unknowns of, you know, your question, your question, like how, I, I like the idea that we kind of get two options. One is, you know, the Cadillac and the other one is the, you know, get me to work car.
Wants the Rivian and wants the Tesla.
No, I, I think, yeah, because I, I don't think we can, you know, one thing that dawned on me tonight is we can't kick the can down the road too much.
Too much further.
I really felt the pressure from Larkspur Corner Madera should be taken out of the equation, hence why not mobile. But this has been a great discussion and I think, yeah, that, that fork right now seems, seems like it'll make it easier to make a decision.
So we, uh, it sounds like we have agreed to option two of the stack recommendation was to return with some additional information on two, a one, one multiple or a new option, but.
I think we'll bring you a budget amendment item, if that's right, Matt Mayor, but we will bring you two choices.
Right.
And, and you can adopt after completing your debate with the additional information we'll bring about the effect on programming of the two sizes.
Yeah. And I think this has been, you know, three hours of a robust debate. So when that comes back, I mean, we can, we're welcome to re, relitigate things. But just keep that in mind that we really have asked for specific changes, um, and specific information to do a compare and contrast. Understanding that we need to do something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask, uh, when staff comes back with that, if it's possible to also, I know there's been some talk about funding sources and different, you know, pools of money, different measures, future, paying it back. Uh, if you could give us, it sounds like council would, would love to have that information.
I'll bring you things I feel confident you could do now and, and then some speculative and potential items. And I think we'll probably bring this on the 15th of October because I, I know we've already programmed your next meeting pretty thoroughly. So.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Thanks. Uh, everybody feel like we've gotten, okay? That's what we do in Larkspur. We have consensus. It's not like some of these.
Our bed nights.
Throwing things at each other. Um, that brings us to item nine, which is adjournment. Thank you everyone for your patience and thank you staff. Uh, Julia, you've got a lot going on between the library, um, the city hall and, and that. So appreciate it. See you guys in a couple of weeks.